Okay, we are reconvening this meeting at 6:05. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at item six, number one, and we have an introduction of a new principal at Cherry Valley. Go ahead, Jason.
All right, so I'd like to welcome up front Lisa Paula Georgias. Did I pronounce it right? Did I pronounce your last name right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. We are pleased to announce that Lisa Paula Georgias has been selected as the new principal of Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. Lisa will assume her duties on July 1st, 2024. Lisa comes to Petaluma City Schools from the nearby Wilson's Elementary School District. She began teaching fourth and fifth grades at Sunset Lane Elementary in Fullerton in 1998, then moved to Petaluma and joined Wilson Elementary staff in 2010 after taking nine years off to raise her children. She's been a teacher leader in the district for the past 15 years, teaching kindergarten in fifth grade. Lisa is proud of her accomplishments at Wilson over the past 15 years. She's co-created their comprehensive two-year TKK program and has been a teacher trainer and mentor for numerous young and aspiring teachers. Most importantly, she shared that our greatest accomplishment is the hundreds of students who allowed me to influence them for greater curiosity, thinking, problem solving, and compassion. They're now graduating high school and college, and I see them living wholeheartedly, investing in their communities through their passions. Lisa received her bachelor's degree and teaching credentials from Hope International University. In 2000, she returned to Hope International for her master's degree in curriculum and instruction. Most recently, she finished the program to receive her administrative services credential from North Coast School of Education. Outside her professional life, Lisa is a loving wife and mother. She and her husband, Aris, Paula Georgias, have been married for 28 years and have lived in Petaluma for 21 years. They are proud parents of three PCS graduates, Theo, 2019, Alexa, 2021, and Silas, 2023. Their home is also shared by two cats and three goats. Lisa is an active community member volunteering with local organizations Unavida and Sunshine's Unsheltered Project. In her free time, she enjoys reading, soccer, gardening, and traveling. Lisa eagerly anticipates joining the vibrant, creative community of teachers, students, and parents at Mary Collins School. The prospect of working with middle school students and the camaraderie of having TK through eight on the same campus fills her with excitement for the upcoming school year. She particularly looks forward to the enrichment programs at Mary Collins such as gardening, the amazing library, and the arts. Above all, Lisa is committed to building on Cherry Valley's strong reputation and great standing in the community. Let's all join in congratulating Lisa Paula Georgias in her new position as the principal at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley.
Thank you so much. After being a PCS parent for so long, I'm really glad to be part of the team, so thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Thanks.
And next we'll have our student of the month presentations, and we'll start off with Kennelworth.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our May Student of the Month, Matthew Lindman. The Kennelworth teachers have chosen Matthew for Student of the Month because he is an academically excellent student, exceptional campus citizen, and one of our best student role models. Matthew is always offering a helpful hand and shows respect to those around him. Ms. Fahey, Matthew's PE teacher, shared, Matthew sets the bar high for himself and works hard to obtain his goals. He inspires his classmates to work hard as well. Matthew always contributes to the learning environment in a positive way. He is kind to his classmates and in return is highly respected. While at Kennelworth, Matthew has taken Kennelworth's most advanced academically challenging courses, including accelerated math and advanced English, and has maintained a high GPA for both seventh and eighth grade. Matthew has also been a star athlete on Kennelworth's cross-country and track teams, earning ribbons during both seasons. Matthew participated on Kennelworth's wrestling team in eighth grade and plans to continue being a student athlete as a Gaucho at Casa Grande High. Matthew will try out for both the football and track teams and will no doubt be a valuable team player for each. Matthew has a passion for football, having gained a valuable experience playing wide receiver and corner at the Roanoke Park Warriors team already. Matthew hopes to play on the Casa team for all four years and has set his sights on continuing to play sports into his college career. While he is still open to all possibilities, Matthew currently pictures himself attending the University of Colorado. When Matthew is not working on his school assignments or at an athletic practice, he enjoys spending his free time working out, hiking, fishing, and woodworking with his dad. The Kennelworth team admires this young man's dedication and positivity, and we know he will do great things. Congratulations, Matthew.
Are Matthew's parents in the audience, if you can stand and be recognized?
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to present our May Student of the Month, Naomi Vengas. Naomi has been selected as Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is an exceptional student academically, who displays the fantastic qualities of optimism, self-discipline, and kindness daily. Ms. Manera, Naomi's math teacher, shared Naomi is an exceptional math student. Naomi puts a great deal of effort into each and every assignment. Naomi is never satisfied with just getting an answer. She always makes sure she truly understands each concept. Naomi is a great team partner, always encouraging her table to stay on track and helps with questions when needed. Most notably, Naomi comes to class with a smile each and every day and is always polite and friendly to everyone, even her math teacher. Naomi is incredibly dedicated student, having maintained a 4.0 GPA for both seventh and eighth grade. Naomi has taken Converse's most rigorous classes for both of her junior high years, including advanced English and accelerated math. Naomi's dedication stretches to her presence at school, and she is proud to share that she has a perfect attendance record for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school years. What an incredible feat. Outside of school, Naomi enjoys reading, listening to music, playing creative video games such as Yoshi's Craft World and Minecraft. Naomi plans to attend Casa Grande High School and goals for maintaining her perfect attendance record and trying out for the tennis and badminton teams. After graduating from high school, Naomi envisions herself attending medical school and becoming either a pediatrician or a family medicine doctor. Naomi enjoys working with children and sees herself in a career where she can get support them every day. Naomi is a valued student in each of her classes, and Kennelworth is incredibly proud to call her one of our students. Congratulations, Naomi.
Naomi's family, please stand. Okay, we have Petaluma Junior High next.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our May Student of the Month, Kenzo Glenn Sharp. Kenzo was chosen as PJHS's May Student of the Month because of his intellectual curiosity, outstanding work ethic, and willingness to challenge himself in the classroom. Kenzo's teachers say that he is a joy to teach because he's so wonderfully authentic, attentive, and respectful. Kenzo says that the things he likes most about PJHS are how kind and supportive the teachers are. He especially enjoys history with Mr. Lemansky and band with Mr. Evelyn. Outside of school, Kenzo likes to rock climb, play piano, and go camping. Kenzo is excited to learn another language and gain more freedom when he moves on to high school. Kenzo is still taking time to consider what his post-high school plans will include. Kenzo's family are also incredibly proud of his achievements. His mom, Sarah, had this to say. From his earliest days, Kenzo has demonstrated curiosity, kindness, and keen powers of observation. He has an adventurous spirit and loves to travel and explore new places, cultures, and ideas. He is a wonderful brother and son. While at first he may seem understated, once you get to know him, you will discover that Kenzo has a hilarious sense of humor and an infectious laugh. Kenzo is a generous spirit with a deep sense of justice. He will often pitch in to help a family member or friend in need. He is goal-oriented and conscious about his schoolwork and other commitments. We are proud of Kenzo and very grateful to PJHS staff for taking the time to honor him. We are excited to see how he continues to shine and find joy in the meaning of years ahead. Congratulations, Kenzo.
Kenzo's family, Sarah. Stand, please.
Petaluma Junior High School is proud to introduce our May Student of the Month, Jillian Leoni. Jillian was chosen as PJHS's Student of the Month because she is responsible, polite, respectful, and hardworking. Mr. Tucker said that Jillian can be counted on to bring up others and that she always makes the class better by her being in it. Ms. Brown shared that she knows she can always go to Jillian when she needs a chance where these students help. Jillian shared that she enjoys hanging out with her friends at PJHS, and her favorite class is Office TA. Outside of school, Jillian is involved in 4H, Forge Community Service, livestock judging, showing market land project, and 22 small bore rifle targeting and shooting. Jillian is looking forward to meeting new people and taking advanced classes in high school. While Jillian is not quite sure about what kind of career she will pursue, she wants to go to college on a small bore shooting scholarship. She hopes to participate in the Junior Olympics over the next several years and in the Olympics when she's in college. Jillian's family is also very proud of her accomplishments. Her mom, Krista, said that Jillian is determined and is set on going to a straight four-year university after high school. They are also impressed by Jillian's enterprise and success on the Sebastopol Junior Rifle Team. Jillian has been involved with 4H for nine years and currently serves as the chapter treasurer. Jillian raises market lambs to raise money for college. School staff and her family members agree. Jillian is outstanding member of the PJHS community who stands out due to her kindness, determination, and integrity. Congratulations, Jillian.
Jillian's family, please stand. All right, next up, we have Petaluma High School.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you for the time and support for you guys, because I know this is the last board meeting before graduation, so that's exciting. Also, don't mind my voice, it's a little scratchy, but. Okay, anyway, Student of the Month for Petaluma High School. First up, we have Laoty White. Throughout Laoty's four years at Petaluma High School, she has taken a combined total of 17 AP honors and JC classes. She has tutored chemistry and honors chemistry students for multiple years. She has been a member of the Engineering and Robotics Club throughout high school, and in her senior year, she became the first female president of the Engineering and Robotics Club. In the summer of her junior year, Laoty spent a month studying sustainable aviation systems at UC Irvine and presented her final research project on the environmental implications of replacing traditional aircraft fuel with hydrogen fuel cells. Outside of school, Laoty enjoys playing classical and jazz piano as well as composing her own pieces, hiking and spending time with her parents and her two younger siblings. Laoty plans on attending UCLA and majoring in chemistry and material science. Congratulations.
Laoty's parents, please stand, or family, please stand.
Okay, and next up, we have Monserrat Ramirez Benito. She is a senior who has attended Petaluma High School for all four years. She showcases her passions for her school community as a yearbook staff member since her junior year with Mr. Jones's yearbook class. She enjoys being able to have an input on the theme of the year and having to take pictures in and out of school events as a way to stay engaged on campus. Transferring from a small school to a bigger community was once nerve-wracking, but over the years, she learned that it was an insignificant problem. She believes that the yearbook class doesn't only give students a chance to be active on campus, but to enjoy many experiences that you thought of never doing, like going to home games for different sports and interviewing many students and teachers that you might have never come across during your time on campus. She has thoroughly enjoyed her time at Petaluma High, especially this year, and appreciates all the support that she's received from her teachers, counselors, and peers. In the fall, she will be attending Sonoma State University and plan to earn a major in psychology in hopes to one day make an impact on the world and the people around her. She is grateful for all the opportunities that Petaluma High has given her and feels prepared to take the next steps into college. Her academic excellence has rewarded her well, and her experiences have shaped her and readied her for her future. Congratulations to you both.
Monserrat's family, please stand. Next up, we have Casa Grande High School.
Good evening, everybody. Our first Student of the Month for Casa Grande is Noah Padeki. Noah is a senior at Casa Grande that has taken multiple AP and dual enrollment classes throughout his time in high school. He will be attending UC Berkeley for statistics in the fall, and post-graduation, he hopes to work in either finance or an environmental advocacy group as a statistician. Noah's proudest achievement was the creation of his trash can cleaning company, where he helped raise the standard of cleanliness throughout his neighborhood. Other extracurriculars that have been particularly impactful to Noah include working at a local pizzeria for almost two years and helping teach elementary-aged kids wrestling, a sport that Noah himself has practiced for six years. In his free time, Noah likes to cook, hike, and listen to music. He is always up for a spontaneous activity with his friends as well. Noah is especially grateful for his parents, teachers, friends, who have molded him into the person that he is today. Congratulations, Noah.
Michelle and Bob here, or Noah's family?
Our next Student of the Month is Brianna Perez. Brianna is a committed, critical thinker and civic-minded senior. She has continuously been duly enrolled since the eighth grade at Santa Rosa Junior College and College of Marin, with several college transferable courses that have allowed her to explore her interests and passions. She has been a dedicated member of both Philosophy and the Political Literacy Club, reflecting her love for current events and thoughtful discussion. Outside of school, Brianna has enjoyed her position as a youth promoter at Latino Service Providers, a role that allows her to aid pushing her community forward by raising awareness on services for the first-generation Hispanics, as well as volunteering at the Petaluma Boys and Girls Club by mentoring first-generation youth. Through these positions, she applies classroom theories and concepts in her community by directly educating her community on equity, diversity, and social justice. She looks forward to a bright future as a full-time student at the SRJC before beginning her journey somewhere else. Congratulations, Brianna.
Brianna's family, please stand. And finally, we have Petaluma Accelerated Charter School, Oceana.
It is with great pleasure that we award Toby Koenig the title of Student of the Semester for the remarkable effort and dedication he has shown throughout this school year. Toby's seventh-grade journey has been an inspiring one. He successfully completed the first semester entirely remotely and with excellence, demonstrating resilience, adaptability, and a strong commitment to his education. Since joining our classroom in person this spring, Toby has continued to impress us with his exemplary work ethic and outstanding performance. He approaches every assignment with enthusiasm and gives his all, consistently producing work of the highest quality. His commitment to excellence is truly commendable. In addition to his academic achievements, Toby is a shining example of kindness, care, and patience. He is always willing to help his classmates, offering support and encouragement whenever it is needed. His positive attitude and friendly demeanor make him a pleasure to have in our classroom. Toby's parents shared that it's true that Toby is an incredibly committed and resilient student who approaches his schoolwork in a thoughtful and intelligent way, willing to do whatever it takes to improve. But it's impossible to talk about Toby's achievements without mentioning what he's had to overcome to get here. In May 2022, Toby was diagnosed with bone cancer. Until this semester, Toby hasn't been in a classroom since fifth grade. Instead, he spent almost 30 weeks in the Kaiser Hospital in Oakland. He endured 10 surgeries, countless radiology scans, and more blood draws than would seem humanly possible. He lost his hair, lost his appetite, and last summer, he lost his left leg. Toby had to homeschool through nausea and pain while hooked to IVs in a hospital room with incessant beeps of monitors and constant interruptions by medical strangers. Yet somehow, he still managed to learn through the fog of chemo and the amputation of his left leg. This achievement award reflects so much more than Toby's academic abilities. It's a testament to his character, his courage, and his resilience. Whether focused on homework, climbing a mountain, riding a bike trail, or reeling in an elusive fish, Toby's determination is powerful. He is truly the embodiment of inspiration. Toby, your teachers want you to know that your hard work, determination, and positive attitude have not gone unnoticed. You are a role model for your peers, and we are incredibly proud to have you as a student. Congratulations on being named Student of the Semester. Keep up the fantastic work.
Miguel Hines Alvarez is the Petaluma Accelerated Charter School Student of the Semester. Miguel joined McKinley in fourth grade and continued into PAX. He is a very responsible and independent student. He puts incredible effort into all he does and takes pride in submitting high-quality work. He excels in all subject areas and can be counted on to complete any task assigned with a positive attitude. Miguel is an extremely kind, caring, and respectful member of our PAX community. Even though he is very focused on academics, he still finds time to have fun with his peers and can often be seen during breaks with a big smile on his face. Through all of his achievements, sorry, through all of his achievements, Miguel remains humble and grounded. Outside of school, Miguel plays competitive soccer. Even with his busy practice and game schedule, he still keeps academics a priority. Miguel's always giving of his time. He was a key volunteer helping coaches with the TKNK and first through third grade McKinley soccer practices. The younger kids loved having Miguel show them how to play soccer. PAX is grateful to have the opportunity to teach a student with Miguel's dedication and positive approach to learning. Congratulations, Miguel.
Will Miguel's family, please stand?
Before we take a break, I just want to invite Drake and Rona to come up here for a second. So these two outstanding individuals have been with us all year, presenting Students of the Month from Casa Grande High School and Petaluma High School, as well as giving some updates about their schools. And it was one of the first years I've ever seen Casa and Petaluma High School come together so closely in some of the presentations that they did. And I just want to thank you for being here at our board meetings every month, and we just have a little gift for you, so thank you.
All right, we are going to take a 10-minute break, but we would like all of the student awardees to stay for a moment for a group picture right here, and then we can go back home. All right, we're coming back from break. We are on agenda item number six dash three, first water presentation. Who's, let's see, that would be Esmeralda or who?
Yes, we're excited tonight to have our first water consultants online. We have Anthony King and Nicole King, who are joining us to provide an update on the work that they have been engaging with us for this 2324 school year. So, welcome, Nicole, welcome, Anthony, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. First of all, cheers to the Students of the Month.
Thank you for having us. First of all, cheers to the Students of the Month. Those were some amazing stories. Anthony and I are really excited to be here. We want to thank the board, superintendent, members of the cabinet, certificated and classified staff, students, and also members of the community. We want to take this time to share a little bit about the engagement. So I'll start with the agenda, so you can see where we're going. I know we have a brief amount of time, so we'll try and maximize it. We want to share a little bit about the engagement in terms of some of the topic areas that we discussed and the tools that were shared. Then we want to get some insight into how staff anonymously share, they'll use what they learned. This doesn't necessarily guarantee impact, but it does give us some insight into how participants both engage and how they're thinking about their next steps. And then we'll have some time for some Q and A, and we invite both Esmeralda and Matthew to join us in that part of the, the meeting as well. We'll go ahead to the next slide to tell you a little bit about our approach that you're familiar with, but it's simple. We know the mission is to do the best for kids. Particularly, we highlighted and focused on some of the district goals for this year, increasing a sense of belonging and trust on campus. So we've worked with your teams to not only talk about the culture, but also the hidden elements of the culture, and you see that represented in this iceberg here. Uncovering those hidden elements that drive culture really help us understand where the changes need to occur to amplify equitable outcomes for students. So what we did was we really focused on what was below the surface, those actions that you see here. And those are really the drivers. And the work that we do, we know a lot of people, when we talk about diversity, inclusion, anti-racism work, developing a culture and changing district in particular, they want lots of tools. Tools, just give me the tools, just give me the worksheets. But the focus that we have had this year and last year was on mindsets. We can give you tools, but if you're not aware of yourself, what drives your beliefs, what your past experiences are, then it's really hard to actually use the tool and to have some sustainability. And so that's what we focused on. This year, I want to kind of let you know that we focused on fears. One of the questions that we asked across all of the groups that we engaged with was, you know, which I found was pretty thought-provoking, was when we don't interrupt biases and when we don't speak up for equitable practices, who are we really protecting? And I'll let you all sit with that also for a minute, but that was something that we, we use as a driver for some of the conversations. Who are we prioritizing over students? And so Anthony will speak to this a little bit later as well. The next slide I want to show you just really kind of anchors us on how our work fits into the rest of the really great ongoing initiatives that are happening. I'll only stay here for a minute or so, but we know that, you know, there's a lot going on, a lot of great work is doing to create change within the district. And this is a question that we got from participants as well, like, how does this all fit in? You know, we want to make sure there isn't overwhelm. I mean, we just want to step back and say that the work that we're doing really is creating a container for change. We know that there are great initiatives going on. If we step back and we really dig into mindsets and what drives people, we believe that that will create the opportunities for these initiatives to really be successful and to really stick. So that is the kind of framing for the work. I want to show you, just remind you, some of you, you may know that we worked with the district last year. And so last year, we really worked, we focused on just really building a foundation, building capacity. And there was a lot of awareness-building work that we were doing. And we started off with doing some stakeholder interviews. We wanted to get an understanding of the context of the district before we launched in. Our value proposition is that we're always looking to tailor and change and make sure that the work really focuses on the district's very specific needs. So that stakeholder engagement work that we did prior to engaging was super helpful. Then we focused on leadership. We did some foundational learning, unconscious bias. And then we also coupled that with some leadership coaching as well. And then we put on teacher development, professional development. And the site administrators had an opportunity to really follow up and use the tools that they learned in that deep brief of the PD. And we'll go to the next slide. In terms of this year, we'll just kind of give you this high-level visual. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony in a minute to share more specifically some of the things that we did this year. You see, we have equity learning sessions at the top. We worked with mostly counseling and guidance specialist staff, as well as some of the site administrators that weren't able to attend last year's learning sessions, and we went through a series with them across several months. We also worked with a professional learning community. So last year, we worked with site administrators mostly and cabinet. This year, we kind of broadened that scope and were able to engage with a lot of district-level leadership and some professional learning communities based on real-time scenarios and real-time needs within the district from a leadership perspective. And we also had the opportunity in August to meet with classified staff, so they were able to get the same PD that certificated staff got last year, that unconscious bias training, talking about the danger of a single narrative about students and families. And so they got that same training, and then we were able to do two PD days for certificated staff. And then you can see at the bottom, all throughout the engagement, we had the leadership coaching going as well. So I'll turn it over to Anthony to, who will share a little bit more about how we went from awareness-building work to really a lot of, a lot more implementation work for this year.
Thank you, Nicole. Good evening, everyone. I will just echo what Nicole said earlier. Great to see, you know, students being celebrated for the things that they're doing, the hard work that they're doing. And so I will jump into what we worked on this year. And while we want to make sure that we focus this year, this twenty-three, twenty-four school year learning on really content learning, we wanted to help start to move people to, to a little bit, to some action. And so what you'll see here is this kind of mashup or this kind of combination of learning and action in different groups. And so we tried our best to try to bucket this as best we could. So hopefully, you'll ask clarifying questions after, after I get through some of the material here. But we really want to make sure that people understood kind of the, the framing of like this idea of a single narrative. When we put people, in the, in this case, students, in a single narrative way, or how education should be, and what education is and what it should look like, that's, there's a single narrative, that became, that can become problematic when you have students who learn very differently, who show up differently, who value different things. And, you know, what do you do with that? And what do you do as a, as a person in the classroom, as a leader? And what can you actually do to change that thinking about this kind of single narrative about any particular person or a way of being? And so when we started the year, we actually started with classified staff this year. We also did this with certificated staff. And we, the goal here was to try to spread every, the kind of common language and common learning across the district. So there was an unconscious bias training this year that happened with classified staff only. They're really focused on that single narrative. But along with that unconscious bias training, they also engaged in, engaged with a tool to help them interrupt biases at different lang, at different levels, excuse me. And we'll talk more about this in detail a little bit later, but what that looks like is interrupting your own self and your own biases, because we all have them, myself included. I'm not, I'm not immune from that. Peers or colleagues that we engage with in systems as a, as a whole, how do we interrupt bias when we see those things happening? And we talked about how to interrupt and create a culture of feedback. We believe that feedback is a very important tool for creating conditions where everyone can speak up, regardless of where they are in the hierarchy of the system, and say, hey, you know, I saw this thing. Here's what I think about that, and I just want to give you that feedback so that we are all on the same page about how we think about students, how we think about our peers and colleagues, and what we think we should do to move forward. And in the last piece, which was reserved for the certificated staff only because they received that unconscious buying training last year that classified received, is about understanding race consciousness through racial scripting. And just to give you a little bit more color to that, what that really is talking about is how did we as individuals come to understand race throughout our lives? That's both through the unspoken and spoken narratives about what race is, how we should think about it, or not think about it. And just really trying to help people understand where does our understanding of race come from? No judgment on what you believe or what anyone believes at this time. It's just about understanding where people are coming from. So I talked about interrupting at three different levels, and this is a framework that we have developed that really is just a, a good way, a good frame for helping people remember how to interrupt. Because it's not just about calling people out or other people out. We are all complicit in creating conditions that are not necessarily equitable for all students. So the first thing is really interrupting your own thinking. What am I believing about what students can do? What, what do I believe about who they are? What story have I made up about these students? And taking time to think about what do I actually know is fact? And what is it that I've just ingested from many different messages over the years? And maybe a sprinkling of, of experiences about any particular student group. And you see the system one versus system two. I'll just briefly say that. Our brains operate in these two different ways. System one is really about survival and quick thinking. You know, when we see fire, we don't have time to think about, oh, is the fire hot? Will it burn me? No, we see fire and we stay away because we know we will get burned. And that is, I don't think it takes many times for us to get burned by fire to know that we should stay away from it. So, but system two thinking is really more reflective. When we take time to think about what do I actually know about this subject, this content, this person, that allows me to step back and remove any bias, which is a preference for or against something, and really take time to be a little bit more objective about what I'm doing, how I'm interacting, what I believe about what students or other people can do and who they are as a person. Then we talked about what does it mean to interrupt interpersonally? How do you, when you hear someone say something that is of perceived, presumably of a biased nature, or any ism, right, racism, sexism, whatever ism you want to name, how do you actually do that? And just saying something, we're not saying call people out and call them evil and all that. We're simply saying you gotta say something. Because without someone knowing that what they are doing, saying, or thinking may be negatively impacting how they're seeing students or how they are approaching or treating students, they'll never change. And so the first step is just interrupting on an interpersonal level. And then the last level is about interrupting the system. This is a longer-term effort that really helps you think about what are the trends that I'm seeing in a system of people who are, who are enacting policies and, and practices in a way that is just not creating the equitable conditions for all students. And so we taught, we, everybody now has gotten this from, you know, classified to certificated to both site and district-level administrators. And so again, really looking to create that common understanding of how you can interrupt at three different levels. This framework about, or this tool rather, about, we call SBI feedback, is really just a frame for helping people understand how do you give feedback or, and interrupt in a way where it can actually be heard? And we break it down into three, three different pieces, which is the situation, just naming what happened, removing emotion and making it as objective as possible. What actually happened when you're trying to give someone feedback? So in this example that you see, we try to put some examples under each particular section of this, this tool. You know, if someone says, and these are totally examples that we made up just to help people understand, this is not something that was given to us by anyone within the district. But we really just want to help people understand that if this happens, here's how you can approach it. So a staff member may say to another peer, hey, at our staff meeting yesterday, you spoke about our students in a deficit-based way. Then I'm going to address the behavior. When we discuss what we could do to improve attendance, you stated on three different occasions that, quote, "These students and parents don't care about school." And then third, the last piece is the impact. When you talk about students and parents in this way, it brings down the morality of the team and places blame on students as opposed to ensuring that we are creating a space for belonging and engagement. And hopefully, you heard in that there's no judgment there. I'm not putting emotion in there. I'm simply stating what actually happened. And by doing that, that helps the receiver of that feedback be less defensive. And when they're less defensive, they're actually open to hearing what was being said and reflecting on their own behaviors, thereby increasing the likelihood that they would actually change the behavior. So we've helped everyone across the district understand that this is just a tool and a way for giving feedback. This is not the end of any conversation, but it is an entry point, and the goal is to keep the conversation going rather than shutting it down. Next, I'll go into what the district and site-level leaders learning that, that we, that, that they, that they received. And a bur, we broke this up into two different ways. So the extended cabinet actually just happened really recently. Learn about culturally responsive teaching and leadership practices. And we did that through, one, just kind of collab, calibrating on what it means and what is culturally responsive teaching and leadership, first of all. And then we went in, on walkthroughs through Petaluma High School to really see what's going on in the classrooms, to focus on what we reference as, what we talked about as independent and dependent learners. And I'll talk more about what that means in a moment, but we, we did that walkthrough just as a learning walk. This was not evaluative. We, this was not a gotcha. This was really just about trying to help situate the learning in your own context. And when we talk about independent and dependent learners at a high level, it's like who is carrying the cognitive load? Is the teacher carrying the cognitive load and doing most of the things for students? Or are students being allowed the opportunity to really wrestle and become critical thinkers as they engage with, with content? For the district and site-level leaders, we formed a PLC. We did about five, I think it was five sessions, and you can see the topics here, or not topics, but some of the things that we engaged with. And what we really tried to do here was root a lot of the learning in real challenges that were in PCS. So we asked people, what are you wrestling with? And we created different scenarios around some of the challenges that were actually happening within, in the PCS context. We then used those same I three and SBI tools to help people think about how can they actually interrupt what's going on? From whether it is, you know, some disparaging language at a, at a sporting event that may rise to the level of hate, the hate speech, or hate-motivated speech, or hate-motivated behavior, to the casual use of any, any language that, that any particular student group may feel is impacting them negatively. We also, we practiced with those tools to help them think about, okay, if this were to happen under, in your, under your watch, what would you do? And so we talked through that. We did some role plays and they had conversations to help build the muscle for people to become more comfortable with being able to interrupt bias actions when they see it. Really trying to increase that culture of feedback. And then the last piece, we kind of put a bow on this is, okay, so you've learned these things, you've learned content, you know a little bit more about yourself. You've learned how to use these tools, what these tools are, how to use them. What is your leadership brand? What kind of leader do you want to be? And then help backwards map, okay, if this is the kind of leader you want to be, if you want to be a leader for equity who speaks up for your multilingual learner students, what are you going to actually have to do to actually make sure that that happens? And what we're trying to get at, as Nicole mentioned earlier, we're trying to get to what's underneath the water on that iceberg. What are the beliefs that people carry that inform the actions? So if we can help you understand and first of all, see the beliefs and ideas and things that you, you, you come to understand about life and, and different people, you can actually start to change that so that that informs the change in your actions. Because us just giving you tools, or anyone tools, is not going to help change behavior. So I spoke earlier about cultural responsive pedagogy, and I won't spend a lot of time on this. I just want to give you a kind of idea of what we mean when we're talking about this. Back in the nineties, Gloria Lass and Billings introduced a framework of culturally responsive pedagogy. And as you know, pedagogy is just the, the method of teaching children. And what we really focused on are these three kind of tenants or domains that she names. Chief among them is the number one, academic success. Everything that we are doing, while we are not teaching people how to teach math or reading better, we're trying to get people to understand that when you honor the culture of different students, when you honor the culture of students, the different cultures of students, you're going to get better outcomes and have greater academic success. When you talk about independent versus dependent learning, you're going to get better academic success. Our students are going to achieve academic success, excuse me. But yes, it is about number two, maintaining a cultural competence. What does it mean to be culturally responsive? What are different cultures and how do people interact with the world? And how do students develop that social-political consciousness, which is simply is, how do they use what they're learning in the real world to push against things that are just not right? Those are important, but the chief among them are academic, achieving academic success. And I'll kind of round this piece out with the kind of image that you see here about independent and dependent learning. Now you see that the, the quote on the right from Zaretta Hammond, who took Gloria Lass and Billings' work and kind of built on that. and really talked about when we don't create these independent learners or give students the opportunity to be independent learners or really wrestle with content in, in, in high level ways. Um, also known as depth of knowledge, level threes, levels three and four. You actually have a negative impact on the growth and development of their brain. And unfortunately, historically, and re, and this is driven by research, many culturally and linguistically diverse students are dependent learners, which means they are looking for the teacher to carry the cognitive load. They are unsure of what to do when they're faced with a new task. They can't complete a task without scaffolds, meaning they can't complete a task without someone giving them step by step um uh advice or help along the way. And as we know, with the world changing the way it is and the rapid advancements of technology, we're going to need students, we're gonna need people, excuse me, that are going to be able to work with teams and solve problems that we don't even know exist right now. So it's important that that neuroplasticity uh become developed within schools. And so that gets back to the point on the previous slide about academic success. All of this work is about academic success. The last group that we uh were able to engage with were uh kind of this guidance counselor group. And it consisted of guidance counselors and guidance specialists. And then we also had a sprinkling of some administrators that were not able to engage in the learning that we had, that we provided last year. So a lot of what happened this year with this group was a lot of what happened last year. And that is a focus on understanding what is bias and what is bias in education look like? How does power and privilege show up in uh education? What is the race consciousness through racial script? What is race consciousness through racial scripting? And then how do you overcome those barriers for self-change? And in the last part, we'll kind of highlight here, uh because I do wanna make sure that you have time for questions. Uh, cause I imagine you have several, uh is impact. I'm not gonna read all these, but these are some of the uh responses to the surveys that we provide. And we provide surveys after every single session. Uh, one, because we wanna make sure that what we're um providing for people is actually useful. And if it's not, then we need people to tell us that so we can make adjustments for the next time. But two, we wanna be able to uh be able to actually share back, like what are people actually learning? And so you'll see kind of yellows, there's no real preference on what's in yellow, what's in gray. This is a way to break up the kind of boxes here. But I'll give you just about 10 seconds to read some of the um highlight, that some of the highlights from the feedback that we've gotten. And this hi, this, this feedback is basically about what actions um practitioners are taking moving forward to help create equitable conditions throughout the district.
Anthony, why don't you read a couple of your favorites? Cause it's really small on our screen.
Okay, I, I definitely shall. So one here is um that someone is committed to becoming fully bilingual to connect with their students. Um, I think that's an amazing thing to recognize that in order to connect with my bilingual students, I need to definitely, I need to learn their language, not just have them learn mine. Um, I can change my grading by adding a rubric and making that rubric transparent to my students. That's, that, that's just good instruction. And it makes the level, it makes the plane feel a little level. Um, they have, you know, someone said that they have tools for responding to other teachers when they're speaking negatively about students. We actually heard in several engagements that people were using some of these tools because we reduce, or I'm sorry, we introduced the SBI feedback and I three pro uh uh framework earlier in the school year. So people have been using these. Uh, and then that some people have, someone said that they had a greater awareness of how bias impacts their guidance uh to our students. So who is carrying greater workloads? And that can look like, I might think that a student who has more responsibilities at home may not be in a position to take. I think someone said, I think someone, a student that was presented, they took thirteen AP classes? Or they were taking a comp thirteen uh AP and um uh junior college level classes, right? But if they've got a lot of responsibilities at home, that person may not be as, uh that guy, that counselor may not be as um motivating to help them take that versus the star athlete, right? So what is the bias here? What is the preference for or against someone who has basically similar workloads outside of school? But we're saying, hey, I think you can excel in these AP classes and maybe you not so much. So those are the kinds of learnings that, that we found to be pretty powerful. Um, here's another slide and I will, uh basically the same, uh a little bit more of the same, but I'll just read a couple of, of them. But um I think I feel more empowered to express myself when I encounter bias racist or slash racism in my workplace. I actually have sentence starters and pathways to follow up in a conversation, making the idea of interrupting a lot less daunting. So people are feeling like they have the confidence now to actually say something uh when they see something happen. And from our perspective, that's, that's growth. Uh, because back to the question Nicole asked or said that we ask is, you know, who are you protecting? When a biased statement is said or a negative statement about a student is said and you don't say anything, who are you protecting? And oftentimes when we don't say something, we are protecting ourselves. We're protecting the relationships that we have. We're protecting the status that we have. We're protecting the job that we have. And there's this perception that if we say something, we may lose in all of those things, any or all of those things. And so in this context, what's more important? The safety and the sense of belonging of students? Or the quote, safety and sense of belonging for the adults? And that's the kind of the point that we wanna track with that. So bringing this all back to the iceberg, we are focusing on those feelings, those thoughts, those values, those beliefs and those fears to help people uncover that so that they are no longer held subject to these fears. And it can actually start to change the actions, the body language and the things that they say. I'll leave it at that for now. I'm gonna turn this, uh stop sharing so I can maybe see a little bit more of your faces and then open it up for uh questions.
Great. Any comments, questions for Anthony and Nicole? So I'll start then. You've been with us for two years now. Um, what do you see looking forward as the work that needs to be done in our district? And how, you know, you just spent the last couple of slides on impacts, which are the feedback immediately after the um, the sessions. But what about other kinds of metrics on what um, you know, cultural changes uh we have at our school sites? We, you know, you're a part of a multi um uh faceted approach that we have on promoting um educational equity in our district. Uh, complimenting you, your work are some, you know, PBIS and some very prescribed training, behavioral training. I think you have the tougher job, which is more cultural and attitudinal. And those are, uh, the metrics for those are much more challenging. So maybe you can give us some hints on what we should be looking for um in terms of improvements on school uh campus culture and school culture? And what you see as our next steps going forward on this work?
Yep, uh, I think so. Um, it was a headline of one of the slides before, but one thing that we connected a lot of this work to and in sessions we named it several times is um connected to the goal of increasing the number of students who have a trusting, a trusted adult on campus. And so when we are able to help uh people understand that when they hear something, say something. When you see something, say something. And when they do that among adults, you're increasing the opportunity or increase, likely increasing the number of teachers or staff members, excuse me, who became, become a trusted adult. Because when a student sees like, and maybe they won't see this all the time, but when they actually see someone interrupt something, that becomes a trusted adult. When they start to see behavior change, if a student feels like someone has not been treating them um, uh for lack of a better term, well, um, and they start to see a behavioral change, that can increase the number of trusted adults that they have. And as we know, and I, I think that you all know this, but when you have more trusted adults, students are more likely to enjoy school. Well, one, show up to school. Uh, they're more likely to enjoy school and they're more likely to engage with school. And which means that they're going to, you know, theoretically, they, what they should be doing is experiencing that academic success because they're more engaged with um, with what's going on in school. The other piece of this is, uh, I mentioned doing the walkthroughs and having leaders really understand what does it actually look like to provide rigorous instruction? From an, and on top of that, through a cultural lens, right? And so really helping principals and principal supervisors understand what kind of coaching needs to be going on um for in, instruction to become even more rigorous. So that all students have the opportunity to set themselves up to either go to college or pursue whatever career they want to immediately after high school. Uh, and you know, we, our thing is, you know, my own personal thing is I want everyone, I want every student to have choice. And when you are not academically challenged rigor, in a rigorous way, the choice of going to college oftentimes is stripped away from you because you're not being prepared for the rigor of it. You're not being put in a position where you have the qualifications, if you will, on paper to be able to be admitted to college. College is not for everybody. Man, not everybody wants to go to college. But at least let's put people, put students in a position where they have that choice. So to sum all it up, I think it is a sense of belonging and increasing rigor. So that is kind of the impact that we would hope that, you know, you would start to see um as we've been with you for two years. As far as what's going to, what should happen moving forward, I think that um it is really getting more into the classrooms and understanding what's happening in classrooms. Getting a better understanding of how you can start to become more culturally responsive uh for your students. Uh, all students in, of all different cultures and culture is not just about where they come from. It's really like thinking about youth culture. So how are we making learning relevant for students? Um, how are we making students feel like they have, are being seen in the curriculum? And then um I had one more point there that is gone and it was probably the best one. Uh, but I'll pause there and I don't know if Nicole has anything to add. And if not, that's fine, but I just wanna make the space while I try to remember my last point there.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I was just gonna also mention in terms of um metrics and, and kind of things to um look for as evidence of uh essentially cultural change. Uh, what you saw from the statements from some of the surveys was a lot of vulnerability. Um, so we've got some great opportunity where we've got growth mindset, just like really maximize across the district. Um, and so there's a great opportunity for um the development of personalized goal setting. You know, everyone is working on something that they've identified that they want to change and, and, and do to become better. Um, either as practitioners or as leaders. Um, and so having that kind of tracking of that goal setting, um those observations and continually growing from a professional development standpoint, um from the staff uh is another, um, another area for growth as well.
Can I uh ask that same question to Matthew and Esmeralda? What, you know, from your viewpoints, what do you see as the uh next steps? And as well as, you know, what we should be seeing on um in metrics on that show impact and improvement?
Sure. Yeah, I would, I would echo what Anthony says around um the, the last session that we had with our extended cabinet around um culturally responsive teaching um and looking at um Zereta Hammond's work around dependent, independent learning. I think um the, some of the feedback that we're getting from staff now is also like, what does this look like in my classroom? What are my practices and how am I engaging my students? What does that look like? And so I think we've readied our system for that next piece. Um, to go to dive deeper into classroom practices and culturally responsive teaching. Um, and to build that um, that muscle um in our day to day, in our interactions. I think the work that we've done with our leaders um has been very impactful. Um, I think then it translates into what are our systems looking like in terms of becoming more equitable? How are we interrogating those? Whether it's um, you know, looking at our processes for discipline, looking at how we're placing our students. I think there's some of the, the things that we've wrestled with all the way back to when we did our Orenda study um in twenty one, twenty two. And so now it is diving deeper and being able to systematically, to look at those systems across our district, um across all departments, to be able to impact those based on what we've learned and what we know and what we can do better at. Um, so I see us moving in that direction. Um, and then deeper training for our educators and staff around um our practices and how we show up for our kids in the classroom.
I would just echo, I mean, again, echo what Anthony said, as Merida said, I think this is a multifaceted um issue and, and the, the biggest, the biggest impact that we wanna see is that, that students are feeling comfortable. All students are feeling comfortable in their environment. And um that's really the impact of that. Those are the metrics that we need to start seeing. I think from, from the leadership team perspective, we've gone through um, I think the last thing that we did together was these, these classroom walks through Petaluma High School. And again, it's not, it was really just to sort of set, set our team up for sort of what we're looking for. So we talk about, how do you, you know, what are we looking for? How, how are we, as, as leaders, as educational leaders, what are we looking for? How are we coaching um teachers and staff? Um, that's, I think that's a lot, that's kind of the work that we talked about. How do we continue to move this forward with that team? That's some of the work. Um, I know that in the, one of the slides you talked about uh the work that you do. I think you said guidance counselor, it's, it's actually our school counselors, school counselors and administrators that missed that work last year. But it's sort of that, what I said originally, there's a lot of this work happening up here. And then we, we've got, we've got to see what is the impact on, on our kids? What, what are our students saying? So.
Anthony, did you remember your thought?
Uh, and I had to write it down, so I didn't forget it again. Um, I think that uh another part of this is really taking some time to um make sure that everyone in the district understands how all of these things are really connected. We've tried our best with the, with the image that we showed you about how we're trying to create the container. Um, and really trying to speak to how our work influences the other three kind of spheres that were in there. Um, and I think that that's just a matter of, of, of consistency across the district. And so what I'm in, in, what is the, what is it gonna take for um everyone to really embody this? Uh, over, over the course of a, of a longer term as opposed to, you know, coming in and saying, okay, that was great for an hour and a half or two hours, but now what? And it gets a little bit to what Esmeralda was saying is, how do we get deeper and strategically deeper? To make sure that everyone's actually embodying what's, what, what they're learning.
So is that uh Esmeralda or Matthew, is that what we should be expecting in the next year is uh the more in-depth in-classroom type of assessments and, and PD?
Yeah, so we're in the process of figuring out what are um, the, obviously our continuous improvement committee, along with our PD subcommittee is working through some recommendations. Um, first water is a part of that and what our equity strand will look like. Um, so that we have continued more in-depth um opportunities beyond like a ninety minute session, right?
Yeah.
Um, but that we, we have uh, yeah, more in-depth learning and training.
Okay.
Teachers.
And I'd love, I'm, you know, part of that in-depth uh dive into practices beyond the classroom. I'd love to see a dimension of it that goes into our hiring, our recruitment and hiring practices as well. We have enough turnover where we should be hiring people that fit this, this approach. Other comments?
Yeah, my questions were similar to yours. So thank you for asking them way better than I could have. But then also digging deeper into the um level three, the interrupting the system. I'm just wondering um what, if anything, came out of the PLCs that can interrupt the system? And what changes do we plan to put in place either now or in the upcoming school year? Just some tangibles.
I think one of the things that um came out of the PLCs is we spent a lot of time um talking about hate motivated speech. Um, we talked about some of the scenarios. We talked about the board policy and some of the implementation. Uh, Esmeralda, I can yield to you. Um, but I, I know that we got an opportunity to really dig into both implementation and how uh different site leaders are experiencing um hate motivated speech in particular. And we're able to capture all that feedback and Esmeralda, I think, has some next steps.
Yes, we, um, from that discussion, um, we talked about a, a procedure and annual training to our, um, for our teachers. So that everyone is clear on what their role is in terms of collective responsibility um for interrupting any hate motive, any hate motive, any hate violence, um hate speech. And so that our leaders are clear on process as well as disseminating that information and that training to both certificating classified staff um at the sites. Um, so we've got that in addition to what other developing more Um so we've got that in addition to what other developing more resources um around the education for our students. Um and also setting um clear expectations in terms of our tier one expectations out to students around how we treat one another, how we engage with one another. Um so that kind of ties back to the PBIS as well. Um but that was one thing that came out. And I think the richness of the conversations that we had. And I would echo what um Nicole said around the vulnerability. I think there was a really nice container that was created in those PLCs for people to really share and discuss um what they were struggling with, what they're seeing um and and working with one another um on that language and and how to interrupt. So I I think it was, it was very valuable. But again, it can't just be one time, right? These are conversations that for us as cabinet with our site leaders, we have to continue to cultivate those conversations and not leave them just in that P- PLC, but in our own leadership capacity and driving that those discussions ongoingly and not letting them just be that one, that one moment in time.
Is there anything that put Matthew on the spot, uh Matthew or Esmeralda or anyone else? Like thinking of like system why, like I think of like our tardy policies, like the PE grading. Just some of the policies that seem unequitable in terms of students' low socioeconomic status. I'm just wondering if there's been any interrogation of some of those, just like really looking at our discipline policies and just like the gradings and why kids are getting marked down. Um I know Anthony and Nicole talked about like what will some of the tangibles be? Like we'll see less chronic absenteeism, more trusted adults, things like that. I'm just wondering if making changes to those like greater systems can lead to some of those as well.
Yes, I would say that there are areas that are have been brought to our attention that we are looking at as a cabinet that we need to go back to our leaders and engage our staff, um our our teachers as well in those areas. So that together as a group, um we can bring those issues forward and be able to, you know, it's look at our ed code, look at our practices, research um and interrogate those and move move on those. And I think there's there's from grading to if we're talking about, you know, PE, non suits and kind of practices and policies that we have in place that we need to sort of open ourselves up to. Is this, is this the right practice in twenty twenty four based on what we know, based on um ed code and um equitable practices?
I think, I think certainly some of the policies that we've had conversations about, tardy policies, about dress policy for particularly around physical education, like when you have uh schools that have different policies or prac, for what really practices, what is our board policy around that? And how do we um, how do we tighten up what we're doing so that it's that it's more uniform and more equitable across our sites? Um and then I also just kind of zooming out, one of the big for me, the one of the big takeaways has been that when we're super clear about, you know, core beliefs, core values, uh expectations, that that it, there's also this this trickle down, right? When, for example, at a school site, if um if a teacher is is in a classroom and saying, boy, I I really want to call out this behavior, but I'm not sure if my site leader is going to back me up, right? Then that's a problem. So it's also about being really clear about what is it that we believe in and and in our expectations. So um that's something else, another learning for for us.
Sorry, Maddie.
Just one other thing I could add. I know we're talking about a lot about student side, but we all started looking at um on the on our hiring side. And um, you know, Sheldon mentioned about like, like the looking to bring people in that are in alignment with this. So we're working on how we make sure that we have diverse diversity in our hiring panels. Language around um how are we incorporating these kind of issues into our into our interview process and the questions? So we can address these things that are very important uh and looking at auditing just our our practices for for hiring, onboarding and retaining diverse staff, which is one of our board goals. So we're doing those other work, but we're also doing it in 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 the human resources end as well.
Before I ask another question, um sorry, Maddie, I saw that you were trying to.
I'll do it uh when, after you.
Okay. Um I think Esmeralda, you touched briefly on, um you mentioned the continuous improvement. So how will the continuous improvement model look like with all of all of these? And as we're changing practices and behaviors and all of this? Like, are we gonna be bringing any of this to the continuous improvement committee? Are we gonna use any type of continuous improvement model? Like, okay, we've tried this, this isn't working, or this is, or, you know, and then bringing it back, trying something new?
Yeah, so um our continuous improvement committee is certainly, you know, they started with a, you know, our fishbone diagram, our root cause analysis and um the work that we're doing around equity, um culture and climate, universal design for learning. So yes, it will be a part of that. The company, the committee has been doing a lot of work around. Obviously, looking at the data, um our California dashboard, all of our achievement data, as well as the youth truth survey. Um so they are looking at that and then evaluating sort of these inputs that we're putting into the system to be able to evaluate um how those are doing and if we continue. Because all of these things are related to the LCAP process, obviously, and and evaluating those of those actions. And so um that would be a part of our process.
So this is, I I hoping this is um maybe going to um focus some of this because we went to uh a workshop uh through CSBA called Governance with an Equity Lens. A systemic approach to closing equity gaps in public education. It was for superintendents and board members. And it was about governance and about how we establish um through our governance team um an equity-driven governing board uh with or with policies and procedures um that are equity-driven. So it it becomes, you know, the focus of everything. And so I'm just listening to this. I was gonna give like a little spiel about it when I talk about the correspondence. But um by the end of the uh workshop, I mean, we looked at um uh the historical timeline of a public school, public education, which has never been designed to be equitable. Um and it really truly was shocking to me how it wasn't and it continued to not be. Um and so it was all kind of, uh we defined what equity meant to us, the barriers within our district, things like that. Um and then what it came down to was, and you're gonna love this because it goes right to first water. Um and that was that we are the interrupters of the systemic inequality. And that um we have to develop highly effective governance practices that address these centuries-old educational gaps. And um so it's a systems change. We're the top of the system. So um we have to work towards changing the mindsets awareness, which you guys are doing a beautiful job, but we also have to do that work. And I don't hear us in this right now. And so I think our work going forward is um first of all, developing, we have, you know, like a a kind of an equity policy, which is kind of like, or it's a statement that's our um board goal, but this is much more extensive. And it's a um an equity statement for our district, policy around the statement, and then a governance action plan. So I guess my, I wanted to just kind of do that now um instead of later because it seemed relevant. Um and Matthew and Caitlin and I went. And I know Caitlin would have a lot to say about it, so I'm sorry she can't. Maybe she'll do it next time. Um so it, it feels like that would help your work, right? If you, if we have an action plan, a governance action plan that we can provide, um you know, equity focus, you know, um what? Direction in all your areas, in in human resources, student services, budget and um educational um services, then that is giving, all of it is around that. That's what she says. This is what we have to do, is ask the questions around each one of those areas and develop this plan. So that's kind of what I came back from this and and we really need to. And I think hearing this, we need to do it sooner than later.
Oh, yes.
In order to help you guys in your work, um and you guys in your work. And you, but you really have the job. That's what I learned at that workshop. I get to kind of do this fun stuff.
Appreciate you sharing it. Um I was just talking to a group of uh folks a couple of weeks ago about something very similar. I took them through a lot of the highlights of history of education. And what we were trying to get at in uh was like, what are the inherent contradictions that that are occurring within the system? And so what you're naming about seeing this system that was set up a particular way, it was set up, it was designed for one particular amount of uh kind of student. And what we've done over the years nationally is say, okay, sure, like, it wasn't designed for you. It was designed for white bo, white boys to go to college, but we'll let this group of people in now. And now we'll let this group of people in now. And now we'll let the, like, we, you now have permission to come experience the system, but we're not going to change it uh for you. And it definitely comes through that uh that policy change. And so uh identifying those inherent contradictions of policies and practice, like we say we want to do this, but this is how we're set up. And those two are vehemently opposed to each other. And so I think you're absolutely spot on with making sure that there's both the policy change that's going on and the the behavior change that's going on. Because if we don't, then we end up with Brown versus Board, right? The the spirit of that decision was to help desegregate. But behaviorally, uh the system, system of people do everything that we can to keep it very segregated. So I appreciate that.
I would think, though, that um if that is our responsibility, and I think it is, we also have to confront our our biases, our stereotypes, whatever, um before we can really do that kind of work. I don't know if there's a plan to have a training with the board. Oh, okay. Well, I I I didn't know that. But it would, I think, in order for us to be able to do that, there's things that we have to confront about ourselves first.
Anyone else?
No, I just think, I mean, what Ellen, what Ellen just brought up and Matt, you know, Maddie and I spent a weekend in Sacramento focusing on this, I I think the more voices that we get into that sort of planning for, I mean, it seems like a great uh board study session around uh equity, equity in in governance and in taking that um that longer-term view, right? This is a multi-year, multi-year plan that we develop, so.
Anthony, Nicole, uh thank you for your update. And um I know I've attended uh sessions that each of you have led, as well as most of us, I think, I'll hear. Uh they've been wonderful and I really appreciate the work that you're doing with our district and I look forward to your continued work with us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. All right, let's move on. Uh we're on to a communications update. I think this is Amy, right?
Okay, cool. Ooh, hey, awesome. All right, well, um Dave is gonna be running my, well, kind of, sort of, he's gonna be helper back there after we get into present mode. Um, good job standing. It feels good to stand. I won't, I, it's actually good to stand. You get energy going and brain, oxygen to your brain, so feel free. Um, thank you so much for letting me give a communications update tonight. Um, I was trying to think about what do I do every day and what does it look like? And um I was bouncing some ideas off Bree. And I think that most of my work really falls into these two categories, the recruitment and enrollment or communications with like a side of community and um ca, and engagement and relations with our community partners. But as you know, they're all so intertwined. Like, it's really hard to suss out um what's going where. We doing okay for sure? Awesome, thank you. Um, oh, I did? Okay, great. So um I actually pulled out my phone for a day in October. And this, these are just some things um that I found myself doing in one day. I got to visit an amazing art class at Casa. Um I went down to the creek with the hatchery kids and I actually put on waders and was in the creek with them. Um I was in a DLI classroom watching this amazing lesson happening at McDowell. And then I got to stop by Valley Vista's Lego Lab, which is so cool if you haven't seen it. And I really feel that as the communications coordinator, it's my responsibility to know the programs that we have to offer. Because believe it or not, we have um so many families that are moving to our area, especially from out of state. And they ask a lot of really good questions and they've done great research. And so um that's been part of my strategy is really knowing our programs. So that's been a really fun part of my life. Um so recruitment and enrollment, uh basically, my main goal is to increase enrollment, which you all know. And by doing that, um the biggest way we do that is tell the story of PCS, which is the best story to tell. Because there are so many amazing things happening, I cannot even keep up. And I'm also, this year, I've noticed um a big shift from last year was my first year in the role and I was getting to know a lot more people, um staff members and parents and students. And I have so many people who text me pictures of things happening, inviting me to different events, like, um it's so fun. And so it's been really great to um, you know, just while I've been sitting here now, I've had Pam Gutierrez has been sending me pictures of the big house caterings, like latest um event. And so it's really nice to have this community out here that's uh wants to help talk, like, people want to tell the story of PCS. Because like I said, it's an amazing community. Um, here's some little friends from Grant that are so adorable. Um, this year, um we've tried to be really strategic in improving the systems that we have, especially here at the district office. So that when families come to enroll at PCS, they have a really positive experience. So if you look at some of these bullet points, um Esmeralda and Jennifer. Um Jennifer Ortiz, who works in Esmeralda's department, manages our transfers. And we currently to date have three hundred and twenty-six students who have requested an inter-district transfer. They don't live within PCS, but they want to come here. And Esmeralda has to review all of those and they go in a big spreadsheet and the principals check it. And we do all that before we can make an offer to, for someone to attend PCS. And then simultaneously, um the transfers document is one page. The IEPs, as if you've ever seen one, are much lengthier. And Sarah and her team, Ally, have reviewed two hundred and ninety-one IEPs of students who I know, um of students who are wanting to come to PCS. Some of those are already PCS students, but we're making sure we have them in the right place. Um and so that is a very complex process, as you can imagine, with a lot of energy around it. And so we've been working really hard to make that um faster, especially for our site principals. As soon as a family um makes, fills out a school application, and we've had like seven applications in the last forty-eight hours, we want to get back to them just as soon as we can. And so we start these processes if we want. Um McDowell, Ruth's here. She holds the record for having the most students um on inter-district transfers in the district. Lots of people wanting to come to McDowell. Um also, one of our strategies this year has been supporting our expanding TK program. So as you all know, next year we'll have TK students who are turning five between September two and June two. So a much younger crowd than we have this year. And um our TKs are full right now across the district with the exception of Valley Vista. So that's very exciting. Um, when it comes to info nights and tours, um from TK twelve, our elementary principals have given over one hundred tours. And our junior and high school um principals have given over fifty tours. And then you'll remember that we not, we also really, there's a strategic effort to recr- recruit and enroll, but there's also retaining the students that we have. And we know that at sixth grade and eighth grade, we tend to see students leave PCS. And so we're working really hard to make sure and to be really strategic with those grade levels. We want to show you what we have to offer. And so we took um over sixteen hundred students, we took on field. And so we took over 1,600 students, we took on field trips to see our junior highs and our high schools. Yeah, we took 823 sixth graders and 834 eighth graders to get to see, they get to walk into the auto shop. They get to go into an English class. They, it's, it's quite a, a big production, as you can imagine. And in fact, you should join us on the tour next year. They're really fun. We might even be adding in a stop at Sonoma State next year for our eighth graders. So it's going to be really fun. And then just supporting our sites as needed with outreach and recruitment. So it, you know, the principal's role, as you know, is very busy. And so if I see a student who's been, Ruth can attest to this also. If I see a student who's been hanging out in schoolment a little too long, I don't like that. And so I start saying, okay, what's going on with this student? Do you want me to call? So really just helping them as they need has been really great. This is just like the backend of what schoolment looks like for us. So you can see, we currently have 45 applications that have been submitted, which means we need to get a response to them. They might be waiting for an IEP to be approved. We might be waiting on a different district to approve their inter-district transfer. Or like I said, they could have just applied. We've had a lot of people applying just in the recent days. I also wanted to share that PAX is full at 64 students for, 64 seventh graders for next year, which is great. They were down a little bit this year, and Gina and Carly and team have worked really hard. So we have a full PAX program. We have a very robust DLI cohort in seventh grade over at McDowell, which we're so excited about. Oh, and then just to point out, these wait, these waitlisted and canceled friends, in case you're like, 365 people have canceled their application. That means that they probably got, they got accepted at a, when they apply, they can choose three schools. So if they ranked Valley Vista as number one, and then they got accepted there, then they would cancel their applications at the other schools. So that's why that number looks like that. All right. And then moving into communications and managing our community and media relations. You all know that we like to have a presence on social media, which I am proud of. And this is a big area of improvement. Next year, I've shared with Bree, we're going to spend some time over the summer and really learn how to schedule posts out, because there will be days where we have lots of posts going on, and then there's days where there's nothing. And so we're going to try to have a more consistent presence, but we have gained quite a bit of traction in social media still. We have over 2,000 followers on Instagram and close to that on Facebook. And just so fun to, it's, it's so fun to share the stories. Like I said, we, it's just, it's so amazing to be out there and talk to the kids and get to share that. The PCS newsletter, for those of you who don't know, goes out twice a month. It goes, it gets sent to 16,000 people. And we have about a 50% open rate, which I think, which is actually pretty good. I was, when I was at the communications conference statewide, people were saying that they see about 30 to 40% of people opening their newsletters. So way to go to Petaluma City Schools families, about 50%. Yeah. So we would like that to be higher. But one of the things we've done to try and make it more engaging is to add in the student and staff celebrations that you see, really trying to highlight all the, you know, we have soccer player that's in South America and someone going to the Olympics soon and all kinds of fun things. So the newsletter is a tool that we use, obviously getting to celebrate with you all at the board meetings. Do want to just encourage you, as you think of the reports and as we look to next year, I'm always open to feedback on how we can make these more engaging and fun. And we do have parameters that we share with the sites, but you'll notice from time to time, people wiggle, wiggle around a little bit. But I do tell when you, when you all are in closed session, something I started doing this year is welcoming all the families. I don't know if you guys can hear me when you're back there, but I welcome them. I introduce myself. I tell them what you're doing behind closed doors. I kind of tell them, you know, what's going to happen at six o'clock, because for many of them, it's their first time coming. And so, and I tell them, like, you are the highlight of our meetings and you are the reason that we're here. So like, thank you for filling this room. Dave's been putting on some really fun music for us beforehand. So I think just those personal touches and making those connections in all that we do really says a lot. And I'm sure you all have tuned in to our new podcast that we have this year. We have five episodes, and although I produce the podcast, Dave Fashara is really to be thanked for this, because he, he's the engineer for the podcast and does all the editing. And Matthew is such, just an awesome, he's just a natural, as you know, with students and staff. And we're out at campuses and we have this big furry microphone and Bree's checking our script to make sure we don't say anything silly or weird. And it's just such a great, it's such a great experience. And so that's been really fun that we've added on this year. And I think just being mindful of where are, where are our families? Where is the audience? Where do we need to be where they are? So we know a lot of, a lot of people are podcasting and listening to podcasts. And so we want it to be in that space as well. And now, some information on our new website. So I want to just make sure that everyone knows, we're actually going to demo the development site for you here in a second. And I want to make sure you know that it's still very much in the development stage. When I say that, the design is all complete, but you'll see, like, you're going to see this photo, which is from McNear. Those are cute little kiddos jumping and leaves with Miss Becker. You'll see that photo like all throughout, because we'll swap it out with photos that, you know, and you'll see some Latin and all of that good stuff. But I just want to point out something, we want to make this a really good end user experience, of course. We have 900 staff members who access our website all the time. We have tons of families trying to find information. We surveyed families and staff, and those quick links that you see there, those are what people tell us they go to the most on our website. And so we use that with a little Google Analytics and we developed these quick links here. You'll notice that the bar, the navigation bar has gone across the top, if that's giving anyone anxiety, I'm sorry. It's that little tiny thing on the right, those three lines. The great thing about this is when you're on a phone, a tablet, whatever computer, it's going to look the same. And so the navigation is going to be on the right instead of across the top. Just to point out, like, this is just a little screenshot of what the Explorer programs. We've tried to tell the story of PCS and who we are and all the amazing programs and students and staff all throughout the site. And so, you know, this is something that's right on the homepage, that we get to put whatever program we want to highlight, or someone, you know, culinary just won an award, or whatever it is, we get to, we get to just switch that out whenever we want. So you can see here just some bullet points about all that's been completed. And what we did is we picked an elementary, a junior high and a high school site. So we've built the Pengrove site and the Kennelworth site. Casa Grande is in process. We're going to make sure those are exactly how we want them, and then we're going to clone them and go ahead and make, make the rest. So did clone.
Was you.
No, 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 no. I will tell you that this project really reminded me that I do not work well by myself. I'm a team person. I like a lot of input and feedback. And so I've been asking a lot of people whenever I'm out and about for feedback and for input. And I want to just give a huge thanks to Dave Fashara. I told him to speak up during any of this. He has sat on just about every single conference call that we've had with our development team, and there's been a lot of them. Bree also was super instrumental in the initial design phase. And also just coming from outside the education world, I think it's so important to have as many lenses as we can. She's like, okay, you guys, not everyone speaks like this, so you need to do, you know? And so just, I want to really thank, thank Dave and Bree for their help on this huge project. I think, Dave, if you want to click on the district site and then maybe the Kennelworth one afterwards. And Dave's just going to kind of scroll around and show you. You already saw this, but when you mouse over the different things, it changes colors. You can scroll quickly to the bottom. These would be different, ooh, so fast. These would be different, any of the programs we want to highlight. And then these color things are just like text that we would want to jump out. We've really improved the way that the calendar and parent square looks there with a nice little footer at the bottom. And then, do you want to dive into any of the other things over on the right side? He'll show you how the navigation pops out. So, and then, go ahead, wherever you want to go. Sure, go to departments. Great. One thing that staff members talk about, and I agree, is that if you're a staff member and you need a form for something, you have to know what department owns that form, and you have to find it. And that is just way too time consuming. So we're going to be having, like, say you want to go on a field trip, you have to go to transportation to get the transportation form and food services to get the lunch form. And so there's going to be a section that's staff resources, and it's like all the staff things there. And then we have a big area for, are you going to click any of those or no? Just to give you an idea, kind of, of what happens when you expand. So you know, he clicked on transportation, and then over there on the right, you see bus schedules and bus rules. And then just also trying to give as many, like, we, anytime you see like that red, reddish link above, like the transit website, we want to give as many resources as we can to our families. So just, we don't want people to have to go looking for stuff, so we're trying to be as simple as we can. You want to jump to the Kennelworth site, Dave? Amazing. So Kennelworth site here, if you are a really big Kennelworth fan, that's not their official logo. Don't freak out. It's just a placeholder. Someone's going to be like, Amy, change the Kennelworth logo. It's not true. It's just so you can see what it looks like. Do you want to, let's navigate to the academic section. So in our research, we don't have an academic section on any of our school sites right now. Interesting. We do now. And so developing some of this content, we have things that can go in academics, but we didn't ever call out like academics. So you can just see the different departments. Dave's going to click on the electives. We really like on the right-hand side, how you can, like, we can call to action, like, here's a leadership application, or, you know, whatever we want to put there, the elective forms. And then this is just one example of their like accordion system that we're using. So it's just not like pages and pages of text. So, you know, right there at KTV, you can go straight to the, their site or whatever. Okay, what else funds on here, Dave? What about the counseling page, maybe? So yeah, you get the idea. Do a little scrooly scroll. And you can meet your counselors. We're going to, it's going to be more robust. There's going to be pictures and all of that, but you get the idea. All right. I think for sure, if you want to. What do you mean? Oh, yeah. So there's a staff directory that's really, it's all, if you go to the district one, it might be there. Like, the staff directory is pretty robust, and it has pictures and it has all their contact information. Is that what you mean? Like, how to contact people? Oh, I see. Great question. Right now, they're just playing, right now, actually, there's, sometimes when you land on our school, there's a welcome letter from admin. So it's a little, there's, it's a little inconsistent on the current site. So we're trying to figure out, like, like on Pengroves, there's a welcome, like, when you click on our school, it's a welcome from Mrs. Harp, a picture of the schools, some history of the school, and then they're also found in the staff directory.
I think it might be nice to just have, especially at the secondary where you have several.
Yes, we do have it at Casa.
Because I know, I remember trying to find.
Yes. There is a whole admin page on Casas for sure, but that's a great suggestion that we can add into all of these. Yeah, thanks, Manny. Okay, and with that, I just have one more little slide, which, oh, and so the timeline for the website, sorry. So our contract with Blackboard Final Site, which is who we use now, ends July 30. We plan to be done like well before that. But that's like, that would be like the latest, the latest case. So, and the, and then, of course, there'll be training for myself and everyone else. I've been looking at it with them on how you make changes, but I'll make sure that everyone's comfortable with, with updating their sites and all of that. The final thing that I just want to share about my role as communications coordinator is just making and strengthening our community connections and partnerships. And that's just something that's embedded into all the work that I do. And so I really believe that I need to be in the places to make those connections, to recruit, to answer questions about schoolment, all of those things. So just a couple, Job Fair for the PCS Rockstar Employee Recognition Program that we've launched this year. We invited Petaluma High students to come down to the DO. It's so fun to watch the DO staff when students are in the building. It's like, it's so great. We were, we're starting to do that much more. They came down and painted the rocks for us. Bree and I have been going out to sites. She's actually headed to San Antonio in the morning and interviewing students and sharing with the community on social media what they're up to after school, after high school. And then just, you know, something like Bike Month that we have going on, being able to, you know, Dr. O comes to me and says, Fedegi, help me leverage this. And so being able to get those things out quickly to the community, just all of that is a part of what we do as well. So when I say we, I mean me. So thank you, guys. And what other questions, Ellen?
I just want to say thank you. This was great, and I really appreciate your enthusiasm. It's wonderful.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. My pleasure. Other questions?
I just, a shout out also, this is why I ran. One of my main priorities was to get communication about how wonderful all of our sites are.
Yes.
The programs that we have, the teachers and staff that we have. And, and admin and everything, and just to really pump it up. And you are doing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. All right, one last presentation, and then we'll go to public comments. This is the, oh, Expanded Learning RFP presentation.
All right. Tonight, I present the committee's recommendation for the 2425 Expanded Learning Program RFP, which involved proposals from two of our current providers. The committee engaged in careful deliberation regarding selecting a single childcare provider for the upcoming school year, a decision that will result in the departure of two of our, two of our current, two out of our current three providers. I want to acknowledge the challenging task the committee faced and express appreciation for the dedication these providers have shown to our students and our families. A primary goal of this decision is to guarantee equitable access to high-quality enrichment programs across all seven elementary sites. This includes implementing a consistent pricing structure, demonstrating our commitment to fairness and accessibility for all families within our school community. Additionally, our enrichment offerings such as marimba, robotics, soccer teams aim to provide diverse opportunities for student growth and development. Furthermore, we are dedicated to embracing diversity to create enriching environment for all of our students, celebrating their unique backgrounds and talents. So as our, part of our RFP, we received three responses. That was Boys and Girls Club, Champions, and Alevo, new to our area. Did not, okay.
So that's not quite as big as.
Who's the third current provider that did?
YMCA opted to not submit a proposal. So as part of the RFP process, there was criteria that the, each proposal and interview was based on. The criteria included experience of proposed personnel for 25 points, organization's past experience worth 25 points, responses to the application questions for 30 points, proposed fee schedule for 50 points, quality of the proposal for 10 points, proposed program curriculum options for 25 points, approach and methodology of program services that the firm demonstrates how it intends to work with the district representatives, students, families to develop programs that meet the needs of the district for 25 points. And any additional information that was provided during the interview was worth 10 points for a total of 200 points. And as I previously stated, one of the reasons for the district going out for the RFP for one provider was for consistent pricing amongst all of our sites. So that piece was weighted at 25% of the overall RFP. The committee, I brought this to the board, last board meeting consisted of 11 members. There was one parent representative from each of the elementary sites, three principal represent, representation of one from Boys and Girls Club, one from Champions, and one from YMCA. And Assistant Superintendent Hua was the district representative. Unfortunately, one of our principals was not able to make the beginning of the first half of the presentations. So we were not able to count her vote. So we were not able to count her vote as part of the process. So through this, um, with a vote of six in favor of Champions and four in favor of the Boys and Girls Club, the committee's recommendation to the board is, um, Champions as the provider for the next school year. And tonight, we have Champions here to give a quick, uh, presentation.
Thank you so much. Good evening to the members of the Board of Education and Petaluma City Schools District. My name is Melissa Josted. I am the area manager for Champions in Petaluma. We are beyond excited to expand in this community. We truly love Petaluma City Schools District. Next slide, please. Our key next steps are meeting with the district and school leaders for transition planning. Licensing process and hiring begins right away. Contract execution prior to May 28th board meeting. Next slide, please. I am extremely happy to inform you that we are extending a 65% scholarship to all employees of the Petaluma City Schools District. We truly value the partnership, and we are very excited to extend this discount to all who work for the district. This last slide shows our implementation time. There's lots of fun things to look at on here. You can all have access to it, but wanted to make sure you saw our 100 days timeframe. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions for, that I can answer or Champions?
I'm just curious how, um, different were the bids? I mean, the actual cost comparisons?
Dave? Would you mind pulling up the other slide deck, please?
Thank you. What was the, um, what was the discount for staff?
65%, which is the highest discount that we offer.
Wow.
This is a great district. I've been here since 2020 and just could not be happier to be with a school district.
Um, is there a sliding scale? So if there's people that just can't afford?
Okay. Yes, there is. And I can tell you even previously, we have never turned a child away, whether there's been district funding. Um, I have provided scholarships for every single family based on their needs.
Okay.
I guess there is a sliding scale for this.
So the one thing I'd like to point out on the pricing structure for each of the proposals is that, um, Boys and, Boys and Girls Club and Elavo both did a monthly structure. So Champions provided a weekly structure. So we just, on this slide, we times it by four, for sake of comparison sake. Um, and the orange gold is the reduced sliding scale, and the white on Champions is the full pay. So, um, roughly 30, um, excuse me. Wow. Roughly 33% of our families, uh, qualify for ELOP, um, and then roughly.
And, and tell, what, what does that mean?
E, so ELOP is our Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, which is the nine-hour school day and, um, summer intercessions that, um, is state-funded for TK through sixth grade and, um, is utilized at all of our school sites. So we have families that fall into that category. We also.
Meaning that, meaning that it's free, that there's no charge for families who qualify for ELOP funding?
Yeah. So those families are at no cost. We also have our ACIS grant program. So we have, um, additional sites like Mc, uh, excuse me, McDowell, which are, operate at no cost to those families. Um, outside of those two, we then have a Champions offers us a reduced rate for families that fall within the ELOP to, too high for that, but with, are still considered socio-economically disadvantaged to a certain degree. And, um, we estimate that to be overall school site-wide, um, roughly between 46 and 50%. So those families will then qualify for the gold rates. Um, as they, Melissa just mentioned, um, all employees, which was a wonderful gift in the original RFP. It was at a 20% reduction. So this was surprising news, um, today. And, um, I'm sure our families will be very excited. So they will be just a little under that gold rate. And then, um, anybody who doesn't qualify for any of those pots will then pay the white amount, which will be the full pay. Um, Champions is known to always work with, um, the district um, and organizations. If there are families within need, um, their words, they've never turned anybody away. And that is something that we, um, have witnessed, that, um, they're willing to work to make sure that every student receives who needs it before and after school care.
I just wanted to add as well, in addition to that, Barb Lawler with Champions Implementation Team, we also work with families that might qualify for state subsidy, or already, already receiving that with another provider, and then working on transitioning that. So in addition to that, we have a, will work really closely, um, in the transition for any families that need that support as well.
So the ELOP money follows the family as opposed to the school?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Great. Any other questions?
I think all parents who have ever had to pay for childcare know that if your kid gets sick, if you've contracted for, you have to pay anyway. Is Champions the same? So if a kid's sick and can't come to after?
I help every single family. This has happened throughout the pandemic as well as prior to.
Yes.
One of the things that really benefits our families is the weekly tuition. Um, so they can unschedule for a week. They can schedule for a week. They're not charged on a monthly basis. But for children that are out sick, and I've got my site director here, we've accommodated every single family and have never said no to a family. You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute bio break, um, and then we'll come back for comments, um, from the public on non-agendized items. We're gonna move to the public comments section on non-agendized items. This is the time to let me know if you have any, uh, public comment to make on anything on our agenda. We're gonna start off with our non-agendized items, but if you have a comment on anything that is on our agenda, uh, I'll take those pink cards now, and I'll put them into piles. We already have three piles for, um, the non-agendized, for action items, and for discussion items. Um, while you're writing your ideas down on the pink card, let me review our policy on public comments. Uh, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and our employees, the district does have a separate policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period, which is coming up now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agendized items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items that are not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate the input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or 20-minute limit per subject matter. Commentators may not cede their time to others. Okay. Are there any other cards that I'm missing from people who want to, uh, make a public comment? All right, great. Then we have two speakers who want to speak on something not on the agenda. And this is on Valley Vista-Live Oak, um, merger. And then we have, uh, some others, uh, that will, will take the, uh, after-school partnership discussion during action items, and we'll take the T-Mobile Cell Tower discussion item during discussion item time. So, uh, can I have, uh, Adrian come up first, and then Lonnie is on deck?
Hi. Good to see you all again. Um, I'm Adrian Sazlo, and I wanted to talk about Valley Vista and Live Oak Charter School, possibility of Waldorf. I have a third grader and first grader at Valley Vista, and we really love it there. The cozy campus tucked against the hill, it's just magical. Programs like music, the Lego Lab, and the garden give it a richness. Best of all are the caring and knowledgeable support staff and teachers like Ms. Angie. Students are loved and supported in all ways, emotionally, academically, and socially. I understand attendance numbers have been declining for the past 10-plus years. And to solve this, I'm worried the district is willing to change what Valley Vista is at its core, instead of trying to promote the gem that it is. Petaluma City Schools only has so many students to go around. Petaluma as a whole only has so many students to go around to the huge number of school districts. And a school with low attendance puts the district in a tough spot. Schools being combined or closed seems inevitable. I don't envy your options, Mr. Harris. That, that's a hard, hard place to be in. I don't have an answer for you on what else to do. But the town hall meeting to talk about Valley Vista as a Waldorf-inspired school was a disaster. Attendees were expecting a meeting from five o'clock to six o'clock. For 45 minutes, the district and Live Oak Charter School staff told the crowd how great Waldorf is. We were given anecdotes on how they'd been skeptical, but now love it. We were not told what a Waldorf-inspired school could mean for Valley Vista, leaving parents wanting more information. Finally, a parent had to interrupt to find out when we would get to participate in this meeting. My question for details on things like textbooks and iPads was given the vague and inadequate answer. We'd have to toe the Waldorf line. How much we would have to give up to be Waldorf-inspired was never made clear. Maybe the district really doesn't know. I don't know would have been a better answer. The parents at Valley Vista want solid information on what is being considered to add and what to take away. Parents want to be involved in the future direction of the school. I would suggest a parent committee to be a part of that conversation sooner than later. From where I stand, it looks like the district is desperate to save our wonderful school, even if it means making it unrecognizable to those of us who have poured our hearts into polishing the gem of Petaluma City Schools. And just to go off script for a minute, like, I'm here and I'm fighting for my school and I want to help make it better. And there are cool things that we can do, but I also have the paperwork to give, I guess it's Esmeralda, maybe, to do a transfer to a different district, because this, this is a hot mess. But I'm here to work with you guys, and we can do good things. Thanks.
Hi, I'm another Valley Vista parent, um, and I'd like to speak regarding the meeting at Valley Vista, just as Adrian did. I'm really disappointed in how the meeting was handled. It felt like yet another time when our families have been let down and disappointed. I expected honesty and transparency from the district and to be told exactly what was proposed and what education at Live Oak looks like. This did not happen. Many parents at Valley Vista did not get the opportunity to ask any questions, including myself. When questions were asked, just as Adrian said, they were not answered, or they were responded to with vague anecdotes. If you don't know the answer, please just say you don't know, but be honest. So here's some of my questions. Will the district be following the State Attorney General's guidelines for school closures? It looks like this applies to school mergers as well as closures. Has the district conducted an equity impact analysis, which is part of the AB 1912 process? What are the statistics on the academic success of Waldorf students who are minorities, English learners, or come from families with low income? So many decisions regarding Valley Vista have been made without parents' knowledge or consent. How will the district ensure honesty and transparency? And how will you ensure that parents are involved in decision-making moving forward? Where do Live Oak students even go after they graduate from Live Oak? Do they seek out similar education outside PCS? Or do they continue within the district? I believe most Valley Vista students do continue on within PCS for their secondary education. I would like to see this data. Besides it making fiscal sense and Valley Vista having a beautiful campus and garden, what research was conducted to determine that this is a good merger? How is it that there was not enough space for all Live Oak students at Valley Vista when the district responded to the Prop 39 request? But there will be enough space for, if Valley Vista merges with Live Oak. Is this because the district is counting on many families to leave? I think so. I've heard from several members of our community that intend to leave if the school adopts these principles. Some families are already transferring their students as they have little trust in the district. When you say that this is just the beginning of a conversation, most families are of the opinion that the district will just go through with this as it makes the most fiscal sense. This is backed up by the Live Oak Board Meeting notes available on their websites where it stated, and I'm paraphrasing, that Mr. Harris's goal is to have each school be one of choice, including Live Oak. And if Live Oak agrees to this, that needs to be done by October when enrollment begins. That's five months from now. We're not talking about much time. What are the next steps after this decision? Since it sounds like something needs to happen, given Live Oak's enrollment or Valley Vista's low enrollment, what is the timeline to make decisions and/or implementation? Students at Valley Vista, including my own, have been given less opportunities and less resources than children in other schools around our district. This is not okay. Our unduplicated students in particular need more support. They should not be tossed aside to go to whichever school has space for them. They need their community, and they deserve equity, which I hear you say, I heard a whole presentation about it, which was lovely, but I don't actually see that being carried out. Equity means that some of our students and families need more support to succeed. Mr. Harris, you've mentioned what a gem Valley Vista is, and it's clear to me that you're referring to the property and not our school.
Okay. We'll move on to item eight, adoption approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is approved. Uh, report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Pull that up. Okay. Uh, since our last board meeting, um, the board trustees have been involved in a lot of activities. Uh, CSBA Equity Training in Sacramento, Assemblymember Damon Connolly's visit to Casa Grande High School and McDowell Elementary School, Boston University Wheelock, uh, College of Education webinar on school policing and safety, Youth Commission on Human Rights end-of-year report, LCAP meeting, Safety and Climate Committee meeting, Arts Committee meeting, Valley Vista Town Hall meeting, Live Oak School Town Hall meeting, Community Service Awards Night, PCS Student Art Show, Casa Grande High School Government Class, Petaluma Adult School Citizenship Class, Valley Vista Elementary School TK Nursery Rhymes event, Grant School Walk and Roll to School event, Petaluma Junior High School Open House, Westside Band Conference, Transhumans Festival, and Resource Expo. It's a long list, and our student board members have competed in several baseball games and taken numerous APA exams. That's what they say, uh, since the last meeting. Does anyone have any comments or reflections that you'd like to share on any of your activities since the last board meeting?
Well, I gave mine about the, um, so if you guys have any questions about it, I could, I mean, um, well, this is just my comments. Um, but yeah, we'll work on it. Did you have anything else to add to what I said?
Anyone else? No?
I actually, um, sent in the webinar with the Youth Commission on Human Rights, and they were talking about, um, how to support unhoused people in our community and specifically our students. So it was just like really great to see these students. our students. So it was just like really great to see these students like so empathetic and thinking about not just our most vulnerable students, but vulnerable members of the community.
Okay, great. Then we are at comments from the public on consent items. I don't have any cards here on consent items. Is there anyone in the public who would like to fill out a card on items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Any comments or questions or observations on anything on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Oh, look at that, none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. Now we are down to item 12, comments from the public on action items. And I have, let's see, four cards here, all on the same item, which is the presentation we just heard on expanded learning. So you'll each have, with just four speakers, you'll each have three minutes and we'll go with Liliana first, Stephen second, Danny third, and Dana fourth. So Liliana?
Hi, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Liliana Paulou, mother of three wonderful kids that attend school here in Petaluma. I come to you as a parent of a McDowell student and a student who attends the Boys and Girls Club. We've utilized after school childcare their entire education so far, and so it's incredibly important to us. I served on the Expanded Learning RFP Committee, and this is a very important role that I took on, understanding that committing to choosing one childcare provider is a big shift. Childcare is such a critical need by many, if not the majority of families, and basic needs are critical in the outcomes and successes of any family, and it's important to understand the impact and in some cases unintended consequences some changes may have. Childcare is critical, like food, employment, income, and housing. We have to understand that these basic needs play an integral role on the family. Without childcare, some families may not have access to employment, and without sufficient income, this can greatly impact their access to food, housing, and other needs. Understand, these are all braided into one another and in many cases cannot stand alone. This is why I took this role very seriously. Excuse me, my nervousness tonight. Thank you. I received the RFP proposals at 8:46 a.m. yesterday morning, same day as the presentations. On my lunch, I reviewed the documents, which some were over 50 pages. Not to mention, this was the second committee chosen to meet, and still not fully understanding the reason for that change, I agreed to return again and serve as a parent on the committee. I come to you as I cannot fathom how, in the name of equity and access, choosing a provider with the highest cost seems to meet this need. Providers state that they will meet every need with enough space to subsidize and sliding scale. This is a dream. I come from the nonprofit world. Potentially 943 ELOP eligible applicants in the district. I've completed subsidized childcare applications. That is not an easy ask. Next, let's think about another group. Remember equity for all to have access. What about the families who may not qualify for these subsidies or sliding scale? No parameters or eligibility criteria were given in the proposal or presentation, so who knows who may qualify for this. By potentially recommending and choosing the most expensive provider, my family's childcare may double in cost. A two-parent, full-time working household. We depend on this childcare. So I ask again, is this equitable? What I do believe would be equitable is to really choose a provider that is truly affordable, looking at the cost. To have an intentional process in the selection of a single provider, more time, more discussion, more time for questions of those providers. We were given 10 minutes. Some questions different for some providers than the others. Some questions recognizing we needed to ask providers that had already left. I have to add, and maybe this is a moment of interrupt, interrupting, and maybe that's why I'm so nervous, because announcing the extra bonus for district staff discount was jarring, to be honest. I do receive, or our staff at our organization can receive childcare discount, and I think district staff are absolutely, you know, deserving of this. But there is a time and place, especially when I am so concerned about cost, and this decision will be at the highest cost. I ask you, board, to really consider equity and question whether this change will grant all families access to affordable childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
Hello, board. Nice to meet you guys and be here today. I'm just here, I sent this email earlier, but I wanted to say it to everybody here, too. I've been involved in this since I heard about it, and I'm just here to share my strongest possible recommendation that the board approves, the aftercare committee's recommendation to move forward into contract with Champions. I have been following this matter and I attended the RFP presentations last night. I was present for the committee's deliberations and I was grateful for all the thoughtful discussion, and I think the committee has made the best possible recommendation for the most number of families in Petaluma. But I can really only speak to my own personal experience, which has just been great. Our personal experience with Champions for the last three years has been outstanding without exception. Their staff consistently exhibits a really reassuring mix of professionalism and true caring for the children in their program. Champions has been an excellent communicator from the office-based team to the onsite directors and staff. They are hyper-responsive by phone and text. In general, they have been infinitely flexible with our parent community. They've always made themselves more than available to meet, speak by phone, discuss any questions or concerns, whether it's in person or on the fly. They are robustly staffed, so they always have time to hear parents' concerns and more than enough attention for the kids in their care, of course. I think most notably and most importantly, when we interact with the Champion staff, my wife and I have always felt that we are speaking to people who not only know our child well, but they also know far more than we do about child psychology, learning, development. These are much more than babysitters for our kids. They are a real resource for us as parents. I don't have direct experience with the other RFP contenders, but I understood from the presentations, the Champion staff is the most highly trained and accredited staff of the three in several different ways. This is not a surprise to me to learn, as I feel like we leverage the benefits of their professional training on a regular basis. I believe Champion staff's excellence is probably tied to their willingness to invest in their staff's training, offer truly competitive compensation packages commensurate with the responsibilities of the roles those caregivers, you know, occupy. But I think it's also tied to the company's culture, which seems to me, just from my experience, to be a cooperative and supportive one and one that's genuinely enthusiastic about child development and expanded learning. To be frank, my wife and I wish our work schedules allowed us to bring our home, straight home from school each day. We carry some guilt placing him in aftercare. We presume he'd probably benefit from being home more, recharging from a busy day. We struggle with the fact that our child puts in the same long days that we do at work, and we wish we had a solution to be home more with him. We don't love having a kid in aftercare, to be honest. But I am really grateful, thankfully, having Champions as our aftercare provider has removed a lot of those negative feelings for us. We'd love to have him home, but we know where he is. He is safe. He is happy. He is still learning in their care, and that means the world to us. We feel really lucky to have such a reliable partner in our, in our children's development. So it hopefully goes out saying that our son adores the Champions program too, not just us. It's been a really meaningful part of his childhood in relationship to his school. We wouldn't be taking the time to say any, I wouldn't be taking the time to say any of this if I didn't think it was important to him as well. All that said, very pro Champions and I love you guys and I'm so grateful for you guys. I do also want to share, though.
Need to wrap it up.
Okay, I want to share my skepticism towards the assumption that any single aftercare provider is the best way to approach the district and serves all of the district's family's very best interest. It seems to be multiple providers would benefit the community in numerous ways. While I do feel like having a single provider is fraught with potential issues, I also question the need to move so quickly. This labor market is super tight and realistically, every one of the RFP vendors is going to face a timeline and staffing challenge to be ready for summer. While I do think Champions is best suited to meet that challenge, I wonder if the board is thinking realistically about the transition and how it's going to affect families.
We need to move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Let's have Danny Alvarez.
Sorry. All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Danny Alvarez and I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs representing our current McDowell and McKinley clubs. As a PCS graduate, thank you for having me here tonight. I was in this room last night presenting to the Expanded Learning RFP Committee for the second time. You may or may not be aware that this was the second round of selection committee presentations. In late March, we presented to the first selection committee and were told we won the vote convincingly. Days later, before the results were brought to the board, we were told there would be a new process and it would be redone so that they could expand the selection committee and get a more broad, diverse feedback. On Friday afternoon, three days ago, we were asked to present to the new committee on Monday night, being last night. On Monday morning at about 10:30 a.m., PCS families received their first notice of this public meeting that was happening that night. Unlike the first round of presentations, Zoom participants were not allowed to ask questions and were not permitted to complete a feedback survey, which was a scoring criteria for the first round. As expected, the room was mostly empty, and this process that was meant to get larger and more equitable input, in fact, did the opposite, as you can hear by the other people sharing. By choosing a partner with Champions, this board is choosing fees of nearly $600 per month compared to $300 per month, and that's before our financial aid program, which was not mentioned. We have dozens and dozens and dozens of kids here in Petaluma that are attending our paid sites for free. I also want to mention that we've been offering a 50% discount to Petaluma City Schools staff at our sites with fees all year, and if it was important to the school district, we would gladly bump that to 100. You are choosing a for-profit organization over a local nonprofit serving our community for over 50 years. About half of those students of the month that came up here today, former club kids. You are dismissing the desire of the lowest-income students in your district that we currently serve at McDowell and McKinley. We are an extremely high-quality program. We're currently happily planning the McDowell Summer Learning Program in partnership with PCS. We were asked to run this program in large part because of its struggles last year. Champions ran that program last year. We've been told that safety was of top concern for this committee. Here are the facts on safety in our clubs. Last month, a team of six safety auditors from Boys and Girls Club of America visited McDowell and McKinley for a thorough audit. We were labeled a model organization for safety and excelled in 82 of the 83 key points with implementation of a digital citizenship curriculum, the only area of suggestion. Our employee background checks go above and beyond requirements. Our bathroom policies are more strict than the schools, and we have many tools in place such as an anonymous tip hotline to keep our kids safe. This may be but what the business office wants, but this is not what your families want. In closing, we have and do value our partnership with Petaluma City Schools. We humbly ask that you do not agree to this proposed contract and let us keep serving the kids at McDowell and McKinley. And you demand a process that is fair, equitable, and takes into account the voices of your families in most need. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana McCune?
Hello, Lynn. Thank you for serving Petaluma community. My name is Dana McCune and I am one of the vice presidents of Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, we are, I'm standing here in front of you guys today to ask that you do your job diligence, and you just heard from Danny that there was two processes in place, and what we have been striving for is transparency throughout the whole process. And I believe everyone who has put a proposal in has asked the same thing. We are all here, including Champions, because we love what we do. We are youth development providers, and going ahead and sticking ourselves against each other like this is not fair. When we could be working together and developing and doing amazing things and continuing to do amazing things for our kids. What I'm asking you to do is to take this two proposals, you as board members, to please take those two proposals, put them side by side, and look at the matrix. Look how the matrix got changed. Look how the questions got changed. Look how the proposal got changed, and look how the communication was presented. And then ask yourselves, is this fair? Was our ESL families, were they really showing up for the second round? We had them for the first round, right? Everything was asked to be translated in Spanish. That was fair. We had many families that came and were able to understand the process. This process, there was nothing. The very first time for our performances or presentations, we were asked to have our presentation and our RFP translated in Spanish. Champions did not. We came, it was 50/50. They had 20 minutes to present. We had 10 because we translated everything. The information that was also spread against us, there are two situations that have, we have been told that the reason why we were not chosen, it was because of a lawsuit that we were not named, but people are claiming, or the rumor is that it's us. That's not us. We were also told that we have issues with staffing. We provide the district with extra staffing. We have a larger staffing than Champions. So there's a lot of facts that aren't being presented correctly, and I'm asking that you as the board, you as district staff, do your fact finding and really take those side by side. You know, equality, this whole meeting was about equality, and that was so beautiful to hear, and it's very, very disappointing to actually see what's happening. Because if you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk it too. So thank you very much. You know, we are always here. We want to go ahead and continue our plan for the summer. We're excited about our plan for the summer to, and we really hope that you guys reconsider and welcome us back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item 13.1.1, Resolution 2324-43, specification of the election order. Matthew, does this need, this needs a preface?
And so we had a presentation by the registrar of voters preparing for the election in November, and this is just a procedural item that happens every year, every election. We need to determine, or the board needs to determine if candidates are going to pay for their own fees on statement candidacy candidacy for the school board, or if the district is going to pay that for them. In years past, candidates have been responsible for paying their own.
And so what is the recommendation on this resolution?
It's just a, it's a continuation of the same process that we've had for years.
Okay.
So is it supposed to be empty?
I didn't want to fill it in without the board's permission. If you want it the same as it's been in years past, I can fill it out as of that. But, you know, it, essentially the biggest questions on here, obviously, the incumbents will be listed on there, but the biggest questions are whether the candidate or the district is responsible for the costs incurred and whether they will pay before or after the statement is printed. And in the past, the candidate has been responsible and they have paid before the statement was printed.
Actually, I don't think there's an incumbent because Ellen and I are at-large trustees and we're electing district area trustees. So I think it's open, I don't think there's incumbents. Yeah.
That happened the last time because we went to districts. So we're not, so you're not an incumbent in your district because you were voted at large. Does that make sense?
There's never been an incumbent for your district. But not yet. Not until you're re-elected. How much is the filing fee? Is that what it is? It's for the filing fee or for like the statement?
This is candidate's statement, right? Yeah, it's the statement, the statement of qualifications.
And if you remember, it varies by how many candidates run for it. The more that run, the fewer, the lower the cost.
How much did you write that check for? It was like $900?
Yeah, it was like $800. Yeah, it's like $800.
You have to now. Can you turn the mic off?
So when I ran in 2020, I wanted it in English and Spanish and it doubled what it cost me. So, but I felt it was worth it.
I think now you have to, right?
Is there any preference? I'm good with staying with the current, current system. All right. Do I have?
I feel like maybe we should pay.
So have the district pay?
Sorry, Amanda, but yeah. Okay.
Do you want to say why?
Yeah, I just, if we want to, I mean, it is a huge barrier. And I know some of us has talked to the Registrar of Voters and she's not willing to cover it. And so we're wanting more diverse folks to run. You know, that's why we went into districts in the first place to get a better representation of the town. The election costs are a huge barrier for people, especially that first one. I need to put a statement in like when I ran because I was like, I didn't, I didn't want to write the check. I didn't want to take the chance. So that's just my preference.
Can I ask the two of you, because the second time you ran, you only had district areas to, so the cost should have been a lot lower.
We didn't have, they actually, we wrote the check. It wasn't.
You're unopposed, that's right.
We were unopposed. And so we weren't even on the ballot. But I thought this was just for incumbents. So this is for anybody that runs. They would, the cost would be covered by the district. And that's our decision.
And look, you guys can decide something different in two years, but for now.
I mean, the, the at-large, it was 1,000-ish. So it should be, I mean, if it's paraded, you know, we have five districts, it should be a lot less. I don't know what it is.
Well, they had us write the check for like 900-ish and then they said if it was lower, then they would reimburse us.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's.
Then it took them six months to get us back the check because we weren't even on the ballot. It's made out to the city of Petaluma.
I understand.
You've got to put your mic on.
I understand that, but the two times I ran, Chris very nicely allowed me to make payments on the check, which I appreciated and took advantage of. So my, the check went to the district and I made payments to Chris.
Well, she didn't offer us that, so we wrote the $900 check, so.
Well, she didn't offer it to me. I asked. I asked. And she said, as long as I got it in by July 1, I was good. So that's what I did.
Moving forward, I mean, I just would like, for us, if we want to get a better representation of the town. And that is a big, I mean, the paperwork too is a huge barrier, but then so is that check. So that cost. The paperwork, Chelsea. The paperwork.
Well, this does not get rid of the barrier of the paperwork.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, Matt.
Yep.
Do we need to amend this or are we making a decision on how it's going?
Well, I think that the intent was to bring this back as a, as it has, it has been in the past. So if we want to amend that, we can amend that. Make a motion. But the intent of this was to keep it where the candidate, the candidate pays for their statement. If you guys want to change it, we can change it.
But it's not filled in, right? Bree, you can just check the other box?
Yeah.
But doesn't, doesn't the district also have to pay for elections as well? And it's a pretty steep price from what I understand.
Correct.
So do you hear a motion to approve this resolution with the stipulation that the district is required by?
Yes. I move. It's okay. Don't feel bad, Maddie. I'm sure Amanda's happy.
I move to, okay, I'm not sure how.
Just approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution to keep things as they are.
Right.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item 13.1.2, Approval of Provisional Internship Permit Request for Joanne Harrison to Teach RSP at Cusco Grande High School for the next academic year. Do I have a motion to approve the?
I move to approve.
I second.
Discussion on this?
I can report that the nice thing about this is we're in a place where this, for example, this candidate, this is just a stopgap. She's getting, finishing her credential. So in order to hire her, we need to have a PIP in place. So we're in a better hiring position for next year where I think we'll have less PIPs that are uncredentialed for the whole year. So that's one qualifying piece about this is it's a short-term PIP before she gets her credential.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 13.2.1, Petaluma City and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Parcel Tax Oversight Committee Member Appointment Authorization.
All right. Thank you. Tonight, we bring forward four individuals for approval to be on our district's parcel tax citizens oversight committee. All seven previous members' terms expired in December, so we have been recruiting a new team. We have found a representative for the elementary district site council, high school parent representative, a school parent representative, excuse me, elementary school, and a business organization representative. So if the board passes our recommendation, we will have a quorum for the committee and we will continue to reach out for the vacant positions.
And this is for all the parcel taxes, not for, for one of them?
Yes. So it's for our current parcel tax. And then in next fiscal year, when we receive the new elementary parcel tax, there will be, it will be added to this committee.
Okay.
And this committee serves to make sure that the district is following, maintaining the fiscal oversight of the parcel tax itself in lines with the allowable uses. They do not determine how the funds are spent. This is an overview, once the funds have been spent, to make sure we are following, aligning with them.
So it's, it's one committee for both parcel tax?
Yes.
For all three? There's two existing.
That's right. Yes.
I move. Have we moved?
No, we haven't.
To approve the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Parcel Tax Citizen Oversight Committee Member Appointment Authorization.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, number two, this is Oversight Committee for the Bonds. Want to say a word on that, Amanda?
Yes. So tonight, we bring forward four people to serve on the committee for the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee membership. That is somebody from a business organization, a high school site council representative, an elementary school site council representative, and an elementary school representative. The names are listed in the description. And there is overlap between some of the members serve on both committees, which is allowable. And we are appointing for an initial two-year term, which is what we are allowed to do. Once we have active, I should have mentioned this before, both committees are active. We will then ask for half of the members to go on to a three-year term in lieu of the two-year. So not everybody expires at the same time. And we will continue to outreach for the open positions.
I move to approve the Petaluma City Schools District's Bond Citizens Oversight Committee Member Appointment Authorization.
I second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, Approval of the Classified Management Salary Schedule, Certificated Management Salary Schedule, Confidential Employee Salary Schedule, and Contract Identities for the Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Chief Business Official, and the Superintendent.
All right. Tonight, we bring forward new salary schedules retroactive to July 1, 2023 for our classified and certificated management salaries with a salary increase of 8.5%. We bring forward a salary schedule for our confidential management retroactive to July 1, 2023. So it's our classified confidential management at 10%, which follows CSCA. And then we also bring forward four contracts for Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and the Chief Business Official for salary increases retroactive to July 1 at 8.5%, which aligns with the rest of management, certificated and classified. And we bring forward a contract idendum for the superintendent at a 6% salary increase retroactive to July 1, 2023.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve the salary schedules.
I second.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad we can provide this increase for our staff. And as well as, you know, in the context of what we've been able to do with our certificated staff and our classified staff as well. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Approval Resolution 232324-41, Dual Language Immersion Academy Charter.
All right. Tonight, we bring forward this resolution for the Dual Language Immersion Academy Charter School, which will operate in its first year next year at McDowell Elementary, on that McDowell Elementary campus, starting with our seventh grade. And in order to do that, we need to open a fund in our financial system so we can track the revenue and expenditures like we do our other charter schools.
And then following that, is there an actual charter? We're going to have to re-prove for the, for the secondary school?
No, that was already approved. This is just a fund.
So, yeah, we received our CDS code from the state about three weeks ago. And then this is the next step in order to be operational on July 1.
It's just setting up a fund.
Yeah, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution 2324-41.
I second.
Any further questions or comments?
Exciting.
Hey, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Approval of Expanded Learning RFP. I think we've heard our presentation. We had several commenters on there. And so are there further? Well, let's, let's move it, let's have a motion to approve first and then we'll have our discussion.
I move to approve the Expanded Learning RFP.
Do I hear a second?
The Expanded Learning RFP.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Questions, comments on this?
I have to say, I'm a little disappointed at the description of the second meeting. It doesn't sound like there was a lot of information posted. There was no Spanish translation. So I'm, at first, it sounded great, but now I'm really questioning the process.
I can answer a couple of those questions. We were working with legal on a very tight timeline to get this to this meeting in order to move forward for, to have the time to move forward for next school year. And we had a hard time gathering members for the committee when we asked for one from each school site. And we were not able to set the date for the interviews. And that was in the RFP that the date would be to be determined until Friday, once we had confirmation from each of the schools and that people were available to come. Though the RFPs were present, the, excuse me, the presentations were not translated into Spanish. We did offer, there was translation on the Zoom meeting last night. And.
What was, why, did there need to be a second meeting? What happened? It sounds like there was a very robust participation in the one in March.
So the first RFP that went out was not, did not go through our legal team. And it was not within the guidelines of what is legal for an RFP. There also was not equal representation from each of the sites. So we did not have, there was not representation from each school. Some schools had more than one representation. And the makeup of the current, the way that the elementaries are structured, that two of the sites had Champions, two of the sites have Boys and Girls Club, and three of our elementary sites have YMCA. And we knew back in March that YMCA was not going to present or offer a proposal. So through this process, we saw that the, the, though people, there were open meetings and a lot of discussion, that is not legally allowed for the RFP process. So we were out of compliance for that. The, through the RFP process is that there is a committee representation, and that is one person from each school site. So though people can come and listen and ask questions, the way the process works is that the one, one individual is the representative for that school in that transition. So that was what happened from the first process to the second process.
My other question is, is why does there have to be only one provider?
Yep. So as we have been discussing, that we are looking at equity amongst all of our sites in the relation that. in the relation that when somebody goes to one of our schools, they're super excited. Currently at McNear, they get all registered. And then they find out that the cost of the current program that, you know, they don't, they can't afford that. So then they want to transfer to another school to receive free childcare. We have programs that have free childcare. So one of the reasons is we don't want before and after school to be a barrier for the traditional school day. We don't want our families to have to feel like they have to make a decision to go to one of our schools because the childcare looks different. Also with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and the Academic Enrichment, a lot of these contracts were brought on at the beginning of the pandemic and some before that, that the rules, the rules of the game, the enrichment program has changed so greatly that that has never really been broadly specified and defined on what exactly is that our district is looking for, for that nine-hour school day in our intercessions.
Except it sounds like for your basic middle-class family where both parents are working and they would have to pay full price, that it's champions is twice as much as Boys and Girls Club.
I don't believe it was.
That's what was presented.
For the five-day it was, but not for the other, like the two-day and the before and after it was not. But for the five-day, it was about twice as much.
And that's a lot of money.
Well, I have the same reservations. Thank you for coming and speaking. I I, I'm actually, I hate to say this is, I, I'm actually struggling with for-profit and a nonprofit. And so, and that has nothing to do with quality of care. But for the for-profit to be double for a five-day a week contract, even, I mean, it's not clear to me who qualifies for the sliding scale. So I'm really struggling with all of that right now. I mean, I trust the committees, I want to trust the committees. And I think you had a good, that part of it, I can understand why it was rushed. On the other hand, just the specifics of it, I'm, boy, I'm really conflicted, so I don't, that's my comment.
I was going to say that it, there's always going to be, well, not, I shouldn't say always, but likely a cost difference when there is nonprofit and for-profit. Some organizations have grants and endowments that help supplement their programs. And other companies and vendors do not have that. One of the goals with this tiered rate structure is to, it, it's not, you're right. It, there are some people that it is not ideal for. Champions spoke that they are willing to work with people. We don't, we don't know exactly what that looks like until that's in motion. But the tiered rate structure is built to help the, the largest amount of the population. So what I feel like we're, we're seeing sometimes in these proposals is that the proposals themselves don't look like a one-size-fits-all because there, there are these really reduced rates. And then these are really high rates. And the hope is that with them together, that we can offer a program, I, I believe all programs that submitted RFPs are, are quality programs, but a quality program at all of our sites. So one of the barriers to education is not what daycare or after-school care provider is or isn't at a site. So to align with one of our district, with our district goals.
Amanda, can you tell me about the, the timeline?
Yes.
The, because, you know, as I sit here and I take in the information, right, public comment, and I wonder about the, if the rotten, you know, sort of feeling. And I know there was a process and then it was, the process was redone. What is the, and I know we have summer program to get started. What would it do to the timeline if we pull it and bring it back? You know, have some conversations with some of the vendors and then bring it back in two weeks?
So the goal was to bring the contract back in two, in two weeks. So we could spring a, if you choose to do a different recommendation and a contract to the next. I, I would like to point out that there were a lot of families that were very upset with, with us pulling the RFP the first time. And we really struggled to get participation because people put their hearts and souls into it. And then the day of, and I know that there was some conversation. A, a vendor was never publicly selected last time. So it, it was pulled before there, it was, a vendor was actually publicly selected. But that really impacted the, this round of the process. And I, I do worry about perpetuating that over again. We had a new selection committee. It was extremely hard to find people. We reached out a few numerous times. The principals really were calling and calling and asking people to be on this committee. There are, the recommendation of legal was to not even have this many people on the committee. Most RFP committees are comprised of three to five people. Matthew and I had a meeting with them about different ways to look at it, to have this committee. So a, and we also needed to keep it equitable, like fair amongst the participants too. So there's really no way that this committee could be larger. Ideally, it wouldn't be this large because it, and it also is harder to reach consensus going into this the whole time. It, and I spoke about it last night. This was a situation because we do have two current providers who submitted proposals. Luckily for, for us, they both submitted them twice. So I'm sure that both organizations, after we pulled it back the first time, had concerns about submitting it the second time. So they've done that work twice. And I worry that by not following the process, we spent hours going through legal to ensure that this was the process that should truly be followed. But with that being said, there were always people that were going to feel like, for lack of a better word, that they lost. Like we have passionate programs, we, we do, we have families who really care. So half of the families and one of the two vendors were always going to be disappointed by that. And it's, it's, I, I worry that I feel like spending more time. It, it's not going to fix that problem of it. If the goal is to move forward with selecting one vendor, it, it doesn't matter if we keep doing this process. One of the, one of the, somebody's going to be upset.
I'm not, I just, I don't feel like I have enough information to vote.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for you to pull a whole new meeting, but I'd love to see the proposals. I'd love to be able to compare them.
And that's what.
So I can have a knowledgeable vote.
And that's what I'm suggesting, I mean, just to be clear. I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm not saying pull and redo. I'm not saying redo everything. I'm just saying there's, there's, there wasn't, because of the timing of this, right? It happened last night, it got, you know, it was on the board agenda, there's, I mean, you know, even baroness was asking me, where are the proposals? We'd like to at least, at least see them.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not saying redo the whole process. I'm just saying, could we pull it, put it back on the agenda with all the appropriate information? And we could even have some, some internal conversation.
Even if the timing, if this meeting would have happened, the meeting last night would have happened a week ago, we would have not publicly made the RFPs available before the presentation and the board. The one selected would have not been posted until the board. So we can definitely bring them, I can share them, we can bring them all back next month. But that piece of it wouldn't have changed.
Except it sounds like in March, Boys and Girls Club knew they were chosen before we voted. And Champions knew they were chosen before we voted. So I, I'm not really clear about what you're saying.
So there, the last time, the decision was made not in an open forum, but in a closed forum. And the members were asked to not share the results of the vote until it went, until we posted and we spoke to the vendors, and that is not what happened. So the, the information was shared that night before we even left by committee members.
Is that what violated, is that what legal?
No, that wasn't the, they, that wasn't the reason.
So is it legal, is it, are, are legal advisors that are saying that we have to have one provider?
No, that was.
So it's just that?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's because there's a a possible inequity in terms of cost. Inexperienced inequity between the two vendors that we have.
So.
For different sites.
We have three, we have three.
We have three, okay.
And the example I gave last board meeting was, and this is not to say that it has to be one vendor, but the, the cost structure, right, at the different sites. So if you have a family who has, as a, you know, new student registering at McNear, I'm just going to, just as, as an example. And they get a cost analysis of, oh, great, we're so excited, register here. And it's $1,300 a month for, for childcare. And then there, but they say, wait, but over here at this school, I can go here and it's free or it's a lot less expensive. You start to see this more and more of the self-segregation, right, of, of our schools. And so we are, we know that we have, I have major concern, I've had for a long time about the, the, the composition of our schools, right? That in different schools are very, you know, very different. But I think that, that kind of compounds it. And so anyway, I think we're conflating two issues, though. It doesn't have to be, you, you see what I'm saying, that versus one provider and what that could look like. I don't, I think that there's.
I mean, it's the obvious approach to go to address it. And it's the, I would say, a common approach to go, you know. And we appointed a committee and a process to settle this. And I think the committee has spoken. And we have a motion on the table. So we're going to, I'm going to call the question for a vote and see where, where we stand here.
I.
Do you want to find a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm having some issues with the different proposals because it sounds like Champion's proposal is not the same yesterday as it was two months ago. And maybe they made it more, I don't know, I'm just assuming from what I've heard, they made it more appealing, more appealing than Boys and Girls Clubs. I don't know if Boys and Girls Clubs was the same as it was a couple of months ago. The, the double, like the cost, the double, losing my words, it's after nine o'clock. The double of the cost of the five days is concerning. I know they're saying that they can work with everyone, but again, what does that look like? I would want to guarantee. I guess I'm just uncomfortable with the process. And I understand that, you know, we have a committee. It sounds like it was a tight vote, six to four. I don't know if people were voting with, you know, who they currently went with. Like if my kid goes to Champions, am I going to vote for Champions? Probably. If my kid has Boys and Girls, am I going to vote for them? Probably. So I, as much as I want to honor the committee, I also am concerned about the process as well. So I just wanted to say that before we call the vote.
Are there any other comments? Okay, there's a motion on table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Abstain, well, we can abstain, we have the information we need. The motion fails. So what's our direction to the, to the, to Matthew?
Can you turn your mic?
Be able to look at the proposals. I mean, the, the price structure was up there and it was like this big. So I couldn't see it even with my millions of pairs of glasses. So I need to see those proposals before I feel like I can vote on something. I don't have the information I need.
Okay, so, so is the direction to, we're uncomfortable with the process, go back out again for a third time? Or is the, or is the conversation, well, let.
Do we have to have the committee in order to make a decision on one of them?
Let's not do this again.
Right, that's what I'm asking. So can we, do we, can we just decide at the next board meeting? Or do we have to go through the whole committee? Because I want you to go through all the stuff.
No, we can decide.
We, so you can send us the information?
But what information do we need to make a decision?
The proposals. And I'd like to see the proposals from March, if that's possible. I don't know, because it's a legal question.
I, I will, I will find out about the March.
Only because it was an interesting, like, were they the same?
Um, to touch on, so the RFP committee is just, is a recommendation. So the board does not need them to make the decision. Also, in some districts for something like childcare, the providers present to the board and the board makes the decision without the committee, without a committee. That was one of the things we talked about and we went with the committee. So if you would like, we can ask the three vendors to present to the board, if you would like, at the next board meeting.
To me, that's why we have a committee, why we appointed a committee. And it's a committee that's well-represented of the stakeholders in the district.
Yeah.
So.
We don't have the information the committee had.
No, but I trust the process.
I need more information.
So we need to articulate what that information is so that we can act.
So if we did that, if you sent us the proposals, and then we would decide at the next meeting. Does that, well, we've already, you know, voted against this recommendation. So, but can you include the recommendation? You know, why they decide, was there a, an explanation of why they decided? Yeah, so include that, the proposals, and then we decide at our next meeting?
Yes, so we.
Yes or no? I don't, I don't think, I don't think they need to come and give us a presentation.
Okay, so that, that's kind of where I was going. So we can, we pull it off and we, I mean, it's voted down. We give you the information, proposals, any information that you need, and then we can bring it, we'll bring it back in two weeks.
And please thank everybody that was on the committee because I know that this is probably really hard. I, I know that. And then we, we own it then at that point.
Did the committee have a summary report or spreadsheet or anything like that? That, that the board can see?
Each committee member filled out for each of the vendors the criteria. And then the vendors were, we call it a cold ranking, where based off of their total points, they gave them a one, they, for second and third, we did the cold ranking vote. And that was the six to four and zero for the third provider, received zero number one votes. And then there was discussion that half an hour, forty-five minutes. And more concerns, things were discussed amongst the committee. And then I, two more times asked if anybody would like, would, if anybody would like to change their vote. So the make, the people voting because. So the make the people voting, because ten of the eleven members voted. It was three were Champions representatives, three total for Boys and Girls Club representatives, three for the Y, and then district representatives. So there were four individuals that were not with the current provider, which, as you said, likely I, the votes were anonymous. So there were not names, but you can probably figure current Champions voted for current Champions. So really, the difference in the for the six to four is the three Y parents and our district representative.
Thank you. So it sounds like our board is asking for more information and bringing it back at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, education services, item three point one, second reading, new course proposals. There's several new quarters, second readings for new course proposals for creative writing, film studies, and production. So let's start with three point one, this is creative writing. Sorry.
I apologize. Is there any way that this can be a special board meeting? Because we would not have a contract if we bring it to the next board meeting until the end of June eighteenth.
That's I was asking for.
Yeah.
For the timing.
Like I.
That's, yeah, that was my question.
So I don't know if there's a way to have a special board meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's, let's chat about that at future business.
Sorry about that, thank you. Summers.
No.
Well, there wouldn't be a contract if you select, we wouldn't have a contract. So when to bring forward, so we'd have to have the contract and it wouldn't come till the June eighteenth meeting, and that's not enough time to implement.
So it's a two meeting process?
Yeah.
All right, let's start with creative writing. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the new course Creative Writing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments? This is in second reading, so we heard about this last time.
So I realize this is a second reading, but no changes were made, and I had made some suggestions. So I looked it over and I just think that there's a couple of errors in the application itself. If on the front page of, it says course to be submitted for A through G approval, and he marked both yes and no. The capstone marked what the CTE pathway. So on the second page, the course of pathway sequence says that it's a capstone course. That's what he checked. There's no pathway, so I don't know how you get to a capstone. And then how does all of this impact signups for other electives that are already established at CASA? And possible new electives that may come from new CTE pathways or expanding the pathways we have? So that's, I, he just, it's just the same thing. I know that we were talking about maybe getting some kind of pathway around, I don't know, literary analysis or?
Yeah, so I did talk to them about the the questions that the board had. They are ensuring that it will be a G elective. Kids are signed up for creative writing at the same time they were signing up for film studies, because they complement each other. The CTE pathway will isn't, is something that they're, they will explore, but it's not something that they can put in place right now, because it goes through a process for to be a CTE kind of.
So then that cap, so him marking the capstone means that eventually that will be a part, a capstone course?
No.
It's like a little tiny checkmark.
Yeah, and I think that just might have been an error. I think they might have used a template, and then we actually changed the templates. I'm not sure what might have been uploaded. The one I have is, it has been marked out, wiped out, so I'm not sure, I'll have to check to see what was, if the correct one was uploaded. But they, they had kids already signed up for these courses. That's why we brought it forward, just because it was, it seemed like they, yeah. Before it was able to go through this process, so.
Thank you, Tony.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion passes. Second course on film studies, to have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Third class production. Have a motion to approve?
I move to approve. Production.
Questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Three point four, second reading for resolution of the bell schedule. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash thirty-six, have a motion to approve.
I move to approve resolution two, three, two, four dash three, six.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any questions, comments? This is what we had last time. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item fourteen, comments from the public on discussion items. I have one card. I thank you dearly for hanging on this long, Heather. The floor is yours. Take a luxurious, luxurious four minutes, whatever you want to do. Yeah, I'm just feeling that.
Anything or can you hear me? Okay. It's always fun to come to these board meetings. You guys all really do a good job, and I love seeing the community commenting and being involved in the students and where they're going and where they've been, and you guys incorporate history and are open for change. So that's wonderful. I appreciate all of you. I am commenting on the T-Mobile cell tower that's on Casa Grande. In January, there was a Petaluma City School Board meeting where we discussed the hazards of the industrials, T-Mobile cell tower. And we wanted to get it taken down. And we followed up with an email in April stating, to the board and to the principal at CASA, stating that there was no permits from Petaluma City Schools for the cell tower to be installed at CASA. And we pointed out that it's illegally standing, and we haven't heard back from the board. And we're wondering what steps have been taken to shut down or remove the tower? And now that we know the cell tower is illegal, how can we let it continue to be operational? I don't know if there's a status update on whether or not there was a moratorium put on its ability to be operational or, because we did discuss that briefly in January. And we also discussed that it may or may not be legal, and we found that it is illegally standing. So I'm wondering what your attorneys know about it. So I'd like a response.
You're about to.
Yeah.
Yay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Discussion item fifteen point one point one, amended board policy, first reading on meeting conduct. Who, who is it that?
This is, this is just.
Oh, Tony.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no, sorry, it's not Tony, it's not Tony.
This is, this is a, a change, a small change to this, this policy around seating time.
Right.
There's just a, it's a small change about not seating time. So we checked in, I think after the meeting.
Yeah.
Couple meetings ago and.
It was on the cell phone, it was on the cell player, yeah, okay. Any comments on that? I mean, it's a simple change. Okay, sounds good. I think we're gonna be ready to put it on the consent agenda the next time or action item.
Exactly.
Okay, fifteen point two point one, cell tower update.
All right, so not responding to public comment, I was just gonna happen to talk about this. With dates and everything. On April eleventh, we sent a notice of termination of site license with option agreement dated October twenty-seventh, two thousand and six, including the amendments to Crown Castle. The letter detailed significant concerns about T-Mobile's activities on the CASA property. Areas of concern included failure to permit. T-Mobile has failed to obtain or maintain a conditional use permit for its construction and operation of the cell tower at the property, and a failure to comply with the joint use statute. After conducting an audit of all the district's existing land use and license agreements, including those with telecommunications providers, we have found that the agreement does not comply with certain requirements of the joint use lease provisions of Education Code one, seven, five, two, seven. So in the letter, we asked T-Mobile to remove all equipment and structures from the property within thirty days of the letter dated April eleventh. They also had seven days for a formal response. They did not give a formal response or remove the equipment within the timeline. So our legal has been reaching back out. And last week, another letter was sent. I'm gonna pull up that letter real quick. Sorry, before that letter was sent, T-Mobile did respond in an email, but not officially that the district's threat to seek TRO is not founded and without information related to the above, and there is no basis for us to move forward and demand a court issue against, like, they're saying that they are going to get a court issue to keep the equipment on our property, but that was in an email from their legal to our legal. And so they reached out last week requesting a second time official response to the first termination letter. So I have a call with legal later this week to look at what our next steps are. Probably will need to get on the agenda for closed session, probably at the next meeting, if there's not a resolution.
Any questions? Questions or comments? And thank you for the advocacy from our community and making us aware of the situation. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, item sixteen, future business. So we need to set a, a special session, is that what I heard? There's only, I mean, our regular scheduled one is in two weeks, right? It has to be before then.
How long does it take you to get the contract? I mean, how much sooner than the twenty-eight?
Well, we will post on Thursday, the twenty-third, and they do take some, ideally, the meeting happens this week.
This week?
We post next.
I, I don't, I mean, we have, we have open houses, oh, my goodness. Friday night.
Could we, could we do it on Tuesday? Is it giving enough time? It's two days.
I hope so. I, I mean, what we could do is, the, if we pushed it later, we could wa, I I'm not sure that it is a great idea, but we could walk the contract on to the board meeting. If it's not ready. Or post by, by Saturday.
So you want the meeting for us to discuss and then decide, and then you would do the contract and bring that on the twenty-eight?
With whatever vendor the board selects.
Okay.
And, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing different things on when that meeting needs to be by the decision, the voting meeting.
Could we do it on the twenty-first?
Sorry, we could also flip it the other way, I guess, and do the special meeting for just the contract. Like the, that's gonna be the first week of June, is that graduation?
Yeah, so you're saying you could do like June fourth? Where? Why can't we meet next week? Monday, Monday, Monday at six. Monday at six. You can skip your class.
I think Caitlin gets home that day. She gets home on the twentieth, I think. But you don't go until six, right? So.
We do a five o'clock.
We can do a five o'clock, four thirty, does that work for you?
We can do it, we can do it earlier.
We're talking about one item, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I have my, I have the bond, community meetings at two sites, so I will not. I, yeah, we will be at Penn Grove and at McNear Elementary.
Let me go back, can we do the twenty-first? We could do it earlier. I know that there's Casa Grande Senior Projects that I, we'd love to get to, but.
Yes.
It is.
There is a bond meeting at their bond meetings that day, but they, they're over at seven thirty. At night. There, there are two each night from five to six and six thirty to seven thirty.
Okay, could we do four o'clock? On Tuesday, the twenty-first? Can everybody else do that?
Yeah.
I was just gonna do the.
Amanda, does that work? Yeah, we can go, I'm going, you can go to the showcase after, four o'clock on the twenty-first.
Again.
Yeah.
My God, it said four o'clock. Must have known. Yeah. I have it on the twenty-first, but then again. Yeah, it is the twenty-first, it's not the twenty-first. But you probably have one appearance. Did you check to see whether it was Karen? We have a bond say graduation. A bond says at six. Yeah.
Any other future business? Asleep? Okay, so we actually need to re adjourn to closed session and continue our closed session meeting. So if you all are diehard and want to stay while we're in closed session, you're welcome to, but we will come back out to report on actions in closed session after we meet in closed session. But we will come back out to report on actions in closed session after we meet in closed section. Okay, we're calling, we're back into open session and we're reporting out on the board action in closed session. Trusty Webster. On item 4.2.1, approval of resolution 2324-40. The motion was moved by Ellen Webster and seconded by Matty Cloud and was unanimously approved. On item 4.4, Education Code 48916, confidential student disciplinary matters, governing board's acceptance of the administrative panel's recommendation, recommended findings of fact, decision, and order of expulsion of student 52512428744530353628 was moved by board member Ellen Webster, seconded by board member Matty Cloud and adopted on the following vote of the board members of the Pedaloma City School District. And then on item 4.5, let's see. Settlement of case number SS2324-02. There was a unanimous approval by the board for the settlement agreement. And finally, on item 4.6, on the, sorry, this is on what now? 4.6 was the?
This is the anticipated litigation.
Yes, anticipated litigation. The board, in a vote of four to zero, authorized counsel to initiate litigation on behalf of the district. Once the case is formally initiated, the defendants and the other particulars of the case will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.1A2. That's it. And the meeting is adjourned.